All right. About to call to order this town council meeting of March tenth, two thousand and twenty one at seven oh two P M. Consideration of the town manager's proposed two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty two budget.
Okay, I guess I'll get us started. Mike Rosen, town manager. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Good to see you all again. I had a lot of meetings recently. I noticed a lot of department heads are in the audience as well. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We're specifically doing the budget overview. As well as focusing in on public works, finance, and then some of the general government departments. This is the first in a series of three meetings. The next one takes place tomorrow, and then the final one takes place next Tuesday. On on department-specific budgets, operating budgets for the next fiscal year. All the information that's presented on these slides are available on the town website. And are also based on the overall budget that was released on March third, which is also on the town website. So. I'll for the majority of probably what's going to be the next forty five minutes or an hour, I'll be presenting. The slideshow for tonight. It's about a hundred slides, and I'm going to try to. Go at a decent pace, but not, you know, I don't want to spend all night just going on slides because I'm sure you all have questions as well. So. But thanks again, everyone who's here, members of the public as well, and I'm going to share my screen now.
Mike, before you keep going, I have a procedural question.
Sure.
So I tend to go through the budget every page and then write notes based on those pages. So there's a bunch of stuff that was at the beginning of the budget book. That I had questions on, but I'm thinking, is it best to wait to do that until? Until your presentation, like your full presentation to us, because they don't really fall in under the public works or finance or general government.
So you're saying that question, the budget message, or what's it?
Well, no, like, you know, there were, I had questions, page eleven, fourteen, seventeen, you know. Just the sum of the information that was in the beforehand stuff, like before we get to the actual. Like general government finance, before we get to those expenditures.
Okay.
So. I can, you know what, though, we can do those after if you want, if you want to do your overview and then.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping that the overview may, I don't know if anybody took a look at the slides ahead of time, but. Maybe we'll answer some of the questions before they're asked. So why don't we, why don't we do the presentation? Department heads who are here tonight, you know, also stand ready, you know, I, I don't have all the answers. I rely to the experts to, to help me out with those. So. Let me first of all, share my screen here.
Yeah.
And we'll go from there. Okay. Okay, so hi, everybody. Welcome to.
Mike, do you want to make me co-host, and I can let people in while you're doing this?
I thought you, you are.
Oh, actually, maybe I am. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so.
Take care of the people coming in and out.
Yeah, and Mike Wilkinson's keeping an eye out as well. So, okay, well, once again, hi, everybody. Mike Rosen, town manager. Welcome to the the first. Budget overview meeting. So we usually do the first night of the three nights, we do an overview on all the. The budget, basically, what was the town manager's recommended budget, and then we do a deeper dive into a few departments on each of the following. Well, I said, the next couple of nights. So first thing is, this slide actually comes from a few years ago, and we haven't updated it because. We, you know, we were ranked thirty fourth by Money Magazine in two thousand and fifteen as the best place to live. We're nationally recognized as now standing town to live, work, and play. We've retained our triple A bond rating from two of the rating agencies, which is important. From for a town our size, it's not common, meaning a smaller size, it's not common to see triple A bond ratings, so that that puts us a sort of ahead of the pack. This slide is shows some revenues over time and how we've relied on different revenue streams over the years. So sort of some of the trends you see along the top line there is that state aid has. Been some, used to be around the eight hundred thousand dollar level, and then it's kind of gone down a little bit over the last. Few years, now we're around five seventeen, five eighteen, and it sort of seems to have stabilized a bit. Investment income is a very large decrease this year. The COVID nineteen pandemic has really. Put a damper on investment rates and interest rates. So this, you know, we're taking a two hundred thousand dollar revenue loss. This year, just from interest income that we normally would build into our revenue model. License permits and fees are another revenue stream. Charges for current services, that's things like some. There, there, other than permits, there's other accounts that, you know, for example, ambulance fees are in there and. Some other specific things that we can show you later on, there's more details on, and then education grants, that's the ECS grant, which. There's a little bit more on the next couple of slides, but has where there's a reallocation model that's taking place that. In Tallinn, which equates to about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars less per year in revenue that we're getting over the next fifteen or so years. And this year, and we're going to get into it more in a moment, but we are accounting for that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar revenue decrease. Even though there, the governor had proposed that it remain level this year. So more to come on that. The next block is the expenditures over year based from the increases based on the town, the Board of Ed, and then a combination overall. This just shows sort of, you know, in some years, there's fluctuation, obviously, about. Sorry, are you all hearing me? I'm getting a note message here that says unstable.
No, we've got, I just muted somebody that came in that had their stuff going. You're fine.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I saw that. Okay, so our expenditure percentages have, you know, fluctuated over time. This year, in this current year budget, we're proposing the town have a two point two eight percent expenditure increase. The Board of Education have a two point four six percent expenditure increase, which, when you average that out, is two point two six, when you also build in the other. Expenditure side parts of the equation. Also, this year, we're fortunate that the grand list has increased over last year. If you remember last year, one of the main issues we had was that the grand list had decreased by point four one percent. This year, we're on the positive swing, grand list is up, which actually helps us out later on. We'll talk more about that, but. That's a good thing that the grand list is going in the other direction. And then the overall mill rate increase over time on the bottom there just shows how the mills have increased or stayed the same, depending on. Some years, if you remember last year, council, I'm sure remembers, there was no tax rate, there was no mill rate increase, it remained at thirty six oh five. For the past two years, thirty six oh five. So. I mentioned the governor's budget. I always have a slide on this, and we always, you know, update it with the best information we have in each given year. So. The governor put together a biennial budget a few weeks ago, closely have been following his budget process. Most state revenues remain status quo. He, I believe, actually level funded all. Local government aid in his budget, but there is some uncertainty over that state revenue. I know a lot of his revenue side is built on federal monies, which. We, I think we're hearing news now that may have passed earlier today. So, but a lot of it is is built upon federal revenues. As I had mentioned earlier, the ECS of the Education Cost Sharing Reduction Plan. Will reduce the town's ECS funding by over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars each year for the next several years. The governor's budget from February holds level the ECS funding, but there, I I've talked to a lot of people. There's dissatisfaction with that approach within the state legislature. It was a bipartisan reallocation model. And so it's expected to be reverted back to the original reallocation plan. You know, on the revenue side, you always want to budget fiscally conservative. You don't want to under budget your revenues. So we've received advice from our municipal advisory organizations like CCM and COST. And our legislators to not depend on the level funding, but to but to account for the three thirty, three ten to be removed from revenue. So we did choose. To reflect the anticipated reduction in accordance with the phase-in plan, so that that three thirty reduction is in all of our modeling. So this chart just, we, I can maybe glaze over this a bit because it just shows year over year. The the governor's estimated twenty one impact to the governor's proposed twenty two impact. Not in this is because ECS grant has held zero here. That's because it's his proposed budget, not the one we are expecting to, the legislature to. Formalize. So on the revenue side. Where the, what's in parentheses are decreases, what's not in parentheses are increases. So. State aid is decreasing by three thirty two, that's the three thirty plus another seventeen seventy one in adult education. Non-education, state and federal grants net out to thirteen fifty eight on the on the good side. Youth Services Grants are going up, but miscellaneous grants are going down. License permits and fees are up slightly. So as well as charges for current services. Down are interest income and then use of fund balance and stabilization, which, as you remember, when we talked last year, we did use more fund balance last year. Than would be normally recommended because of COVID nineteen, you know, a year ago at this time, COVID was just. Becoming a thing. We were trying to be flexible and nimble, so we decided to use to make ends meet. Last year. We used five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance plus a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars out of the stabilization fund. To close the gap in this current fiscal year that ends June thirtieth. What this one fifty five decrease reflects. Is that we're only requesting to use or anticipating to use three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance this year. And the remaining hundred and ten thousand dollars in the stabilization fund. So we're zeroing out the remaining balance of the stabilization fund. And we're coming down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the use of fund balance. So overall, our net revenue is decreasing by six seventy four. One five four that we basically need to figure out how to fix that. So. An amount from three fifty is being used from fund balance and one ten from the stabilization fund. I always mention every year, especially since we just got our triple A bond rating reaffirmed, that best practice says that. We stay in the range of ten to fifteen percent of operating expenditures is what you want to have in your fund balance. We're about twelve point nine five. If you look at the projected year to come, we actually dropped from twelve nine five to. Be twelve one or twelve two. We'll get to that slide in a moment, but it shows a bit of a decrease. Consider also the fact that we did just use this year. More more fund balance than we're normally used to, as well as that we paid for the fire truck. Four hundred thousand dollars out of cash, and then the remainder borrowing. So there is more impacted the fund balance than in a traditional year. And it's not something that we budget for every year regarding overuse of the general fund. You only want to sort of minimally. Tap that as much as possible. This just shows our fund balance over time. If you start at the bottom and then kind of work your way up. As you see, it kind of goes up and down, up and down, depending on what's on the table. Last year, it went, twenty twenty, it had gone up from the previous year, and then this year, we're projecting it's going down to twelve nine five. And then the following year, it's going to be twelve twelve. This again shows, I'll try to use my cursor here. This shows the reliance on. The various revenue sources that the town utilizes. So the blue segment here is property taxes. Obviously, over time, it looks like property tax usage is being heavily relied upon. So we're at eighty two percent now is property taxes. Fifteen point nine one is state aid, and that little green segment is other sources. That's your investment income. And other, you know, local receipts and things like that. So we're obviously very heavily reliant on property taxes. That's commercial and residential are built into that. On the expenditure side, so this is sort of your roll-up chart that these, these are the numbers that will be reflected at the public hearing on the seventeenth. So. Town departments are looking to go up two point two eight percent. Capital expenditures are going down from last year from one ninety two to one sixty seven, which is a decrease of about twelve percent. Debt service is going up fifty thousand dollars, which is just over a percent, but that mainly reflects. The impact of Birch Grove School coming back online, and then the Board of Education budget, we're recommending to go from forty million to forty one. Which is a million dollars or so, nine eighty two, nine nine nine, or two point four six percent. So your overall percentage change on the expenditure side. Year over year is two point two six percent. That's just expenditure increase. This, these graphs, just, we always show these graphs as well, just because it gives a nice picture of our operating costs over time. You know, town side, we, I I would say that this is not really a steep curve. It's kind of a predictable curve. You know, we're going up a couple of hundred thousand dollars each year. We're trying our best to keep, you know, costs low. And give you all the services that you're accustomed to and come to expect from the town. On the Board of Education side, a similar story, some, you know, a little bit more grouping here of of not big increase years. Forty, forty, then forty one this year. So they're going up, you know, a little about a million dollars. This pie chart shows the expenditure percentages based on object code. So Board of Ed's about seventy percent of overall expenditure budget. Twenty one percent on the town, about a third of a percent, or even point three of a percent in capital. And then almost eight percent in debt service. And then the drivers on the expenditure side, utilities are are one. Debt service, I mentioned fifty grand. Capital improvements, supported by the general fund, decreased that. That was. When we first came to council with the capital plan, we were able to find a way to. Fund one of the capital projects that was a cargo van. And we were able to fund it a different way without having to hit the capital for next year. So we actually netted a decrease in capital. Road materials decreased by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars due to reduced pricing. And after a trend by our health insurance consultant, we have budgeted a zero percent health insurance rate increase for next year. But there's still about a forty thousand dollar delta due to just enrollment changes. A staff, you know, comes and goes. Some people are on. Family plans, or some people are on single plans, they leave, and then a family plan comes on. So it it nets out to a forty thousand dollar. Overall enrollment increase. This is, we do budget in one free bulky waste pickup, which I know the town has very much in favor of keeping that as much as possible as part of our budget. Willamantic Waste Paper, they offer to to do another one-year addendum to the contract. Due to the poor recycling market conditions, I know that was mentioned at last night's meeting. So recycling disposal is up about three percent per ton. And that's so that equates to about fifty thousand dollars overall. They're going to, they're they're willing to waive the fee again for the one. Bulky free waste pickup a year in October. The town still does pay, though, for the disposal tonnage, which is sixteen thousand dollars, give or take. But, you know, we do charge that to the solid waste capital account. And then the last thing, and I have another slide on this shortly. But the one sort of new thing in my proposed budget in the town side is in almost in direct response to a lot of feedback I've received from. Elected, appointed, and officials and staff is that we can, if the town could add a position for a project manager slash grants administrator. It would be really favorable for us to have a position like that. And in order for us to help smooth the phase in. Of that person, we're looking at a start date of halfway through the fiscal year or January first. And that means that the only thing that would be accountable for the this year's budget, next year's budget, I should say. Is half their salary or thirty five thousand dollars, plus the fringe benefit cost of about thirteen thousand five one six. Obviously, the other half of that will be reflected in the following fiscal year. The other thirty five thousand dollars. Would show up just similar to how we did the firefighter this year, the public safety officer. We accounted for half of it in year one's budget and the other half of it in years two's budget. These are, this chart is some of the expenditure drivers. So salary increases. Now, this may look like a big number, but also consider that that. Includes the half a year's salary for the public safety officer. As I just mentioned, that hits our books in this fiscal year. Because that person just came on board January of two thousand and twenty one. So this budget needs to capture the other half of that impact. FICA is up, property and liability insurance is up, machinery and equipment. The recreation center, this is the final phase in year for the overall cost of forty four thousand dollars were moved to the recreational fund. To assist the town in reducing the budget. The rec fund, as you all know, was not growing as much, especially without any programming. And they still have capital improvement needs. So we we have been giving eight thousand dollars. To this to help them offset that, but this is the final year of the phase in for their utility cost. And then lastly. Other services and fees are up about eighteen thousand, increased mostly due to alarm monitoring fees. So that's not provided by Tallinn County Mutual Aid Services any longer. It was in the past, but now where we were able to, and this can, this will come up when we go through the departments, but. Departments that had alarm fees in their operating budgets have been able to shift them into this. Other services and fees line item. So basically, we're paying for it a different way, but it's about an eighteen thousand dollar impact. So. The Board of Ed had adopted a budget of forty one million two nine three two eight nine, or an increase of about three point one nine percent. I I spoke with Walt, Will, Dr. Will, our superintendent, about the situation we were in. A lot of our revenue issues and also the fact that, you know, we, it's a COVID year, so things are still strange and we're not really sure. So. We, we, we had to see what's going to work for the the entire town, and we, we talked about how to do that, and we came up with a way that. I've reduced some requests out of the townside budget, and Walt, it's it's his domain, it's his jurisdiction to decide. What to, you know, how how it could possibly work, but we, I I did request that the overall operating budget of the. Board of Education be forty one million two eight nine, which is an increase of nine eight two nine nine nine. Not the full twelve seventy five nine nine nine. So, you know, that's something that. Obviously, if that ends up going forward and and not changed in any way, you know, Dr. Will, it will be able to. Work on how to how to make that, you know, work for the school side. And we've, we have talked collaboratively on some ideas that we have had, you know. Peer-to-peer about how to do that, but ultimately, it's it's Dr. Will's decision. So this budget as presented does factor in a mill rate increase of one point two six mills. Which is about three point five percent year-over-year tax increase. You know, that's that's somewhat higher than some years that we've had. A lot of years are under the three percent mark. But the fact is that, you know, we, last year, we were had a zero mill rate increase. We made it work. And some of that sort of has caught up with us now at this time. So we're advocating, you know, we're advocating for a little bit larger of a mill rate increase at three point five. And there's some more documentation coming up on sort of what the impact on that would be to the average taxpayer. So if you are. You know, how you do your tax rate, you you take a look at your property value, your assessed value. And we usually show what three categories of of house values in town, low, medium, and high. So if your assessed value is one twenty nine, five seventy, or a little bit on the lower end, the taxes at this year's. Tax rate would be about forty six hundred dollars a year. But let's now with the new mill rate, you take your new, your your house value, multiply it by the new. Bill rate, and you would see the difference is a hundred and sixty three dollars a year in your taxes. If you do that again for the medium category, your taxes would be going up from six four four eight to six six seven four, which is a two hundred and twenty five dollar difference. And at the higher end, if you're at the three one four one two five. You're going from eleven thousand three two four to eleven thousand seven twenty, or a difference of about four hundred dollars per year. So. You know, obviously, every home's different, every parcel is different. You would have to do the mill rate calculation. For your own respective home to see what it would be for you, but we just like to show three levels so people can kind of get an idea. You know, if you're closer to the one, two, or three hundred thousand dollar mark, sort of where, what this would mean to you at the the new mill rate. This slide shows a little bit, so the improved tax reval increase over the past six years. So. We do a six-year average of all of the the mill rates, and we take a look at what that does to your. Your tax values based on the six years. So some some lighter years and some decrease years. This was a revaluation year. And so if you're, the average of all of the assessed homes in town is one eighty eight, two eight five, that actually dropped in two thousand and twenty due to the reval year. But that averages out that your household increase in taxes over six years was about sixty five dollars in Tallinn. So. Again, this is just an average. It's not, you know, specific to any one particular parcel. So at this point now, we've gone through the overview slides. We now are moving into the department-specific slides, and I will. You know, obviously, the subject matter experts are here in the room for for these things, but I would like to just. Go through the slides, and if there's specific questions on departments, you know, we can have the the department heads answer these questions. So. Department of Public Works, this is their organizational chart. Obviously, there's a director. You have, I mean, you have operations manager, you have supervisors, and then you have laborers, mechanics, custodians. Truck drivers on the equipment operators. So and then they also have the cemeteries and the tree wardens and. Director of Public Works oversees WPCA as staff, and then also, to some degree, the Tallinn Water Commission as well. And they work hand in hand with the school athletic director and sports groups in town. So Public Works has a lot of hats. They also are supported by an executive secretary. On the left, you'll see Parks and Facilities Division. On the right, you'll see the Highway Division and a nice couple of pictures there of of the staff. Scott likes to tell me that we have a hundred and twenty five miles of improved roads in town and eight point four one miles of unpaved roads. If you think about that, when we talk about Grove and. Roads and paving schedules, that's a lot of, that's a lot of mileage of roads in town. So, you know, think, think about that when we're thinking of how we're going to pay for that. So. Fifty five large and sixty six small pieces of equipment that the DPW owns. There are twenty four overall municipal buildings, there's four cemeteries, and there's a hundred and thirty five acres of grounds, parks, and fields combined. Tallinn DPW has a social media account under Tallinn Works, which they advertise all the time. And some pictures of our grounds that we and buildings that are maintained. And then there's some, they also maintain the fields in town. And talking about paving before, so we contract with a vendor, VHB. That provides us the pavement condition index or the PCI of all of Tallinn's roads. They're an engineering firm. They specialize in pavement condition indexes for many years. We, our goal is to reach a townwide PCI of seventy five or higher, and to be able to continue maintaining our roads and infrastructure, you know, year to year. I mentioned about funding of the roads, and because there's big dollar amounts, roads are not cheap to maintain and pave. We do about a million dollars a year in road pavement, and a million dollars doesn't go very far. Yeah, that's just sort of the nature of construction, public construction and paving and things. So. I wanted to show some pictures of what roads look like, you know, sort of over time, if you think about it. So here's a beautiful, nicely new paved road, no blemishes. Pavement condition is ninety nine. Here's one that's got a little bit of cracks, but it's still pretty good. Eighty six. Seventy three obviously shows a little bit more like lengthy cracking here. Looks like maybe some more intense usage. Sixty five, now you've got multiple areas of cracking. And then lastly, here's a road that's forty three, that significant, this needs work, you know, this needs to be paved at this point, looks pretty rough. So here's a, this is not, you know, the, this is sort of what the. Pavement condition index is as of two thousand and twenty. So the blue roads in town are the ones that are in the closer to a hundred. And green, and then yellow, and then red. Red is the ones that are more in the forty to fifty five range. So. As I said earlier, we're striving for an overall town average of about seventy five on the PCI. But there's a pretty good mixture here of different roads, and there is a schedule. That the town follows when it comes to paving roads that's based on this, you know, the ones that are lower on the, or I should say, the ones that are more. Priority to get paved are the ones that are in the, you know, lower red and yellow zones, but also depending on the usage of the roads, that's factored in as well. So if it's a main artery. It'll also be prioritized, but that's also, that's all done through the the VHB contractor. DPW also wants to showcase that they're working on the Plains Rode Culvert substantially complete. They have some future projects they wanted to showcase as well. So next up, we've got the South River Road Culvert. I'm sorry, let me go back for a second. So that's, that's a project that's coming up in the next year or two. I have to verify that with Scott. So their budget details. This is, we, we're going to have a lot of these type of pages. These are in your budget books, counselors and public, that they're out there. This just shows the year-over-year increases in pretty much all of the line items. We're starting here with Parks and Facilities. You know, honestly, I'm sure we may get questions specifically, but year over year, you can see in the right here, what's what's going up and what's going down over time. On the bottom, it's it separates out if there's operating expenditures versus payroll expenditures. So in this object code, there aren't payroll expenditures, but. Overall, this category is going up five point oh nine percent. But you'll see that there's offsets as well. So let me go back, sorry. So the major adjustments to this. Was obviously, oh, was in the salary line items. Sorry, let me go back a second. I must have missed that. I made a mistake. I I said before. I, I, I said before about payroll, you, some of the, some of the um, spreadsheets have, have payroll baked into it. Uh, but anyway, so pay, payroll uh, is increasing for contractual labor uh, wage increases. Um, this, there's, there's raises that are built in there for the non-union staff as well as for the union staff. And also that minimum wage is increasing. Um, utilities accounts were increased, fuel and oil is increased. Um, we added ten thousand dollars into our contingency account, this is DPW's contingency, to help cover unexpected expenses that come up during the course of the year. Um, Scott Lappin, DPW Director, had asked if we could uh, put a, a capital line item uh, for contingency that things that come up. And I actually directed him to put it into the operating budget instead, so that's why that ten thousand dollars shows up here. Um, there are obviously times where things go uh, haywire or not according to plan. And we do need a little extra money and, you know, Scott perhaps elaborate, you know, situations that have happened. But that's what that ten thousand dollars we're bu- we're budgeting for and some other miscellaneous things if you want to read through. Um, we utilize our cemetery account to supplement seasonal help for trimming and mowing of the four town owned and operated cemeteries. Um, we typically spend fifteen thousand dollars for two of our five seasonal help and another fifteen to two, hundred to two thousand, which covers overtime. So here you have streets and roads. Um, as you see, they actually are taking a decrease this year overall. Um, there's some increases that categories and then there's some big one here on ice and snow removal. We were able to remove a hundred and ten thousand dollars um, out of this line item, which very much helped out, you know, on other line items to help make ends meet. So we appreciate um, you know, the DPW directors, you know, budgeting in this regards. Um, so the, you know, the big one, so their overall change is minus eighty thousand dollars uh, due to uh, the price for treated road salt decreasing. Uh, we did have an increase in the salary line again for um, raises contractual or non-union, which we usually budget two percent for non-union. Uh, fuel and oil is going to be a recurring theme that council, you're going to see increased price of oil and fuel increased and gas, um, diesel as well. Um, any other highlights there, minor tools budget was increased a thousand dollars and the machinery and equipment parts budget increased by ten thousand dollars. Uh, the highway garage is now connected to water and sewer service. And therefore, the professional service account was reduced by fifty five hundred dollars for required well testing. Um, so the services and fees account also increased by twenty six fifty to include repairs to the, the tree truck, uh, the, the inspection cost that they get yearly. Um, the lights and traffic control, uh, there was a twenty five hundred dollar increase due to using more kilowatt hours. And uh, lastly, again, follow Public Works on Facebook or at Tallinn Works. Um, Finance Department, um, we have multiple divisions in the Finance Department. Financial and Records and Accounting Services, Miscellaneous Support Services and IT, which we contract out for IT through the Town of South Windsor. Uh, Revenue Services, Property Assessment and Board of Assessment Appeals and the Town Clerk. Um, I haven't looked at the attendance again, but I believe most of the depart, division heads are here. So again, thank you, division heads for being here tonight as well. Um, Finance and Records uh, have a lot of responsibilities. Um, you know, payroll is a big one, debt management, town and capital budgets, financial reporting, grant reporting. Uh, you know, accounts payable, accounts receivable, uh, you know, purchase, purchasing uh, IT services. We, we have all sorts of uh, responsibilities in the Finance Department there, Central Office um, Services. Um, the payroll is going up under the uh, finance, the Accounting Services Department for contractual raises there. Uh, for union staff, uh, program budget increased by nineteen thirty three. Uh, this increase is mainly due to um, some financial software maintenance agreements that uh, did, that did increase this year. There is the independent audit had no change this year. Uh, that's the same at twenty seven four fifty, we locked in that price um, for five years, I think Lisa, you can check with me later. But I believe, oh yeah, held constant for the next five years. And the town and the board each pay half and half on that since the audit covers both sides of the house. Um, so Accounting Services, um, this shows payroll, I, this, this just kind of reflects what I just spoke about. But payroll's up, you know, raises and things, professional services. Um, here's where I was talking about, you have your payroll expenditures and then you have your operating expenditures and then you have the average of the two of them. So they, you know, they break it out that way. For Miscellaneous Support Services, the operating budget increased due to uh, service needs for print management contracts and an increase in fuel costs. Um, so that reflects here in these budget sheets, so it's up four percent, four point one nine. Uh, IT, which I said we uh, we do contract out for that, it's actually decreasing this year. Uh, the professional services account increased a little bit due to the annual contract increase. Communications increased by fifty eight eighty mainly due to an increase in the internet provider fees and frontier telephone connection fee increase. Uh, several new alarm lines that were required by the fire marshal. Uh, computer software licenses decreased due to licenses that don't have to be renewed this year. So we pulled them out of the budget so that they're not in this year, if they're not going to be renewed this year. Um, as it says, some of our contracts are multi-year and only come due every two or more years. So we do get some um, savings that way, even though it's sort of spiking up and down every couple of years. Uh, the equipment account decreased by ten thousand dollars due to elimination of the server replacement that we funded. It was a one-time thing last year and it should be good for uh, I don't know, a couple, a couple of years at least. And our, our uh, computer program is uh, fifteen computers per year are replaced every, every fiscal year. So that just, this shows that net of what we just talked about, which nets out to a five point seven five operating decrease this year. Revenue Services, uh, a lot of responsibilities again. I am very proud that we have a ninety nine percent collection rate. Even I believe in the pandemic year, it was still a very high collection rate, I, I believe it was ninety nine again. Uh, profess, uh, we filed uh, tax billing and collection and processing of town taxes, uh, reconciliations. Um, you know, they uh, account for and deposit funds from other departments and programs. Um, tight uh, tight cash controls, legal notices, um, et cetera. Uh, their budget's going up twenty five seventy one uh, for wage increases. And they offset that a bit with the expect, the spent, the expense accounts going down. And professional services and printing increased by eight hundred eighty two dollars due to uh, tax software increases. And the disaster recovery service is now required, uh, but they offset that by decreasing postage um, due to a service called Q Nest, which puts multiple bills in one envelope if the names are the same, so there's a savings there. And we do also have the five dollar uh, DMV reporting fee for delinquent motor vehicle accounts. Um, so we get about fifteen thousand annually for revenue from that. And this just shows that, so payroll's up a little, you know, two percent. Uh, operating expenditures overall net out to a decrease of two hundred. So overall, they're up one point five four, very reasonable. And Assessment Services, um, I think people are familiar with what the tax assessor does. But um, this, the grand list is a big thing that they, they work on, building permits, annual reports, annual budget revaluation, which we've been able to have in-house revaluations um, due to our assessor being a professional in that field, saved us a lot of money having to go out and contract with another um, re- revale firm. Uh, also heavily working with crumbling foundations and assessment abatements on those properties that have crumbling foundations and also veterans, homeowners and other exemptions. And if you all remember, we were talking before budget season about uh, looking into how um, this, that the software operates for the assessors um, and possibly having uh, another subcommittee to look into that in the future. But perhaps after budget season, we can bring that back up. So overall budget increased by forty eight hundred dollars, uh, that's payroll. And uh, the program budget as well increased by six hundred and thirty two dollars due to minor increases in professional services. And this just breaks that down for you here. Um, so finance, yep, so next we've got um, significant projects over the next two years. Uh, the assessors have to defend, um, defend the values in court from twenty nineteen revale. They want to convert to a new appraisal software. Um, they have education workshops and uh, investigating options for a new mapping vendor. Uh, Board of Assessment Appeals is a board in town, it's not, you know, staff. But the Board of Assessment Appeals is an appointed three-member board that also has two alternates. They make decisions concerning taxpayer appeals of assessments, but they had no change to their budget this year. It remained the same at six hundred dollars. Town Clerk's Office, um, uh, you know, as you all know, our Town Clerk uh, previously uh, went to another community. We uh, were interviewing for the Town Clerk. In the meantime, we're very fortunate that um, Kathy Padon, our interim Town Clerk, has stepped up to um, you know, step up a bit until we can find a full-time Town Clerk. Um, but they, they have a lot of, a slew of responsibilities, assisting residents, title searches, attorneys. Um, they have the uh, the land records, they index them, they collect conveyance taxes. Um, they have all the property maps, they issue uh, sports and dog licenses, they keep the master code book, the, where all the resolutions go and where everything, all the formal codes go and uh, policies. Uh, they maintain the minutes, they prepare all the ballots, they just had a heck of a season for the federal election last November. Um, um, so they assist in registering voters, they, you know, minister oaths of office, they swear people in, they swore you all in, they swore me in. So they have a pretty uh, uh, busy day at the Town Clerk's Office. Um, and there's even more, but I'll skip these for now, um, just to essence of time. Um, they did get a fifty five hundred dollar state preservation grant. And we, last night, council approved me to go forward and sign uh, another fifty five hundred dollar preservation grant for the following fiscal year to restore and preserve um, survey maps. And um, they did the presidential election, as I mentioned, during the pandemic and kudos to them for um, being awesome for that. That was just no other word for it. And our office, their office successfully processed uh, increase in land record recordings. Uh, very busy season during the pandemic, um, sixty five thousand dollars over budgeted uh, revenue dollars during a busy election season and with the same amount of staff. And they have some goals for next year again, which is to, to go after that grant again. Um, uh, work with the state's new um, death registry system and utilize the preservation funds um, to continue re-indexing uh, work in the historical land record indices and uh, et cetera there. Um, but in terms of their budget changes, they, their printing costs increased due to the increase in land record recordings. Uh, this increase will be offset by an increase in the fees and conveyance taxes. So that's, you know, that's a good number to be going up. And uh, payroll increased by twenty four eighty nine uh, due to employee raises. And that just snapshots what I just said here. Uh, General Government, so that's sort of our departments, meaning uh, you know, uh, myself, Mike Wilkinson in our office. So uh, firstly, the Town Manager's Budget is increasing by what looks like to be a significant amount. Now, remember, this is the staff in my office, you know, the, this is the increase. So this is salary increases in the staff in my office. But also the major driver of this is that thirty five thousand dollars for um, the new uh, project manager grants administrator position that I would like to start in January of twenty twenty two. Uh, also in our payroll, um, twenty percent of one of the executive assistant positions is funded by the Water Commission since it supports that commission and intakes um, bills and, and ministers oversight to the Water Commission. Um, I, I wanted to put a slide here about the new position that I'm proposing. Um, so this position is going to oversee and manage responsibilities for uh, grant identification, research, writing, administration and audit for all uh, grants that Tallinn pursues, including renewals. And there are a lot of grants that Tallinn pursues. Um, uh, I can get more in, in a moment, but um, this person will act as a project manager for substantial town capital projects. This position is in direct response to requests made by elected and appointed officials to have someone dedicated to these type of tasks, uh, centralizing them. It also addresses a town manager goal of looking into staff succession planning. Um, because one of the major um, staff people who deals with grants might be retiring in the next two to three to four years, depending on their timetable for that. So we need to plan successfully to succession plan that now because that person is not, that's not their day job. They're not a grants administrator, you know, they're a different department head. Um, but this position would report to the Town Manager and will be cross-functional across all town departments. Now, I wanted to share this, this is not on the slide, I'm just going to read uh, for a second. Um, so I spoke to a counterpart that, um, to this position, someone who holds a similar role in another community in Connecticut. We had a nice discussion on what they actually do for their town. And it's many of the things I'd like this role to fill here in Tallinn. By consolidating and centralizing the grant function in their community, this person, uh, in her time with her community, this person has brought in six million dollars over the past three years in grant revenues, just because that's their dedicated day job to do this. They work with their department heads who have expertise and help them sort of uh, finalize and tweak grant language to make sure that they're awarded the grant. Um, and they also work on cyclical grants for the state and federal government. If you think of cyclical get grants, you may think of uh, various state aid grants like the STEEP Grant, the Connectivity Grant. Um, there's the um, uh, some housing grants out there, the um, CDBG, things like that. Um, they draw up the timelines and they never seem, this is just, I'm reporting what they told me. Uh, they never have downtime because they're always, and they're doing the project management oversight piece as well. So um, department heads have thanked her for taking on the brunt of the town's grant work, freeing them up, the department heads, to work on other things that are more in their wheelhouse than paperwork. So I just wanted to share that conversation that I had with um, somebody else in the state who does a very similar role. Uh, unfortunately, they're in a very different part of the state, so they wouldn't be interested in this position. But we would obviously publicly post this role and we would have a good um, you know, recruitment for it if this gets left in the budget this year. And hopefully it is because it's a revenue generating position. Um, so overall, the Town Manager's Office Budget Line Item looks like it's going up a lot, you know, obviously seventeen percent. Uh, uh, most of that, or actually all of that is this uh, you know, contract or uh, salary increases for the other folks, plus the new position of the Grant Administrator. Uh, Town Council, you, you have a budget as well. Um, under the Council Manager Form of Government, uh, the Town, the Town Council is the legislative or policymaking branch of the government. Um, you know, seven members who are elected at large for two-year terms concurrently. Um, oversight and leadership required to establish policies that guide the direction of the town and ensure the optimum delivery of services to residents in the most cost-effective manner possible. Um, so uh, and you make the policy and I execute it, I enact it, that's our relationship. Um, no budget change to your budget this year. Uh, so you know, professional services remain level. Uh, printing, advertising, dues and memberships, training and development, office supplies and program materials, everything remained level this year. Economic Development, um, so we have an, we have a standalone Economic Development Commission in town. Uh, there were no changes to the EDC budget. Um, there is a professional services line item of five thousand dollars that you're going to see on the next screen, which I've talked with the EDC about at their meeting. And um, there, you know, a couple, about a year ago, we uh, we engaged in the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan, which we're partnering with Bolton, Mansfield, Coventry and us, Tallinn, we're working together on creating a regional brand identity for this uh, area. Can't say county because there's different counties involved, but um, but yes, this area so that we can be attractive to businesses and residential developers that would like to come to our part of the state. And you know, that by, by regionalizing this effort and not just focusing on one town alone, uh, we're able to compete with some of the bigger dogs out there. And that's the thought behind this is that we could, you know, maybe after some, after some of the plan is implemented and some things are, uh, we're still in the, the um, starting phase of this, it's the first five or six months, so it's still early days. But we're still organizing right now, but um, and I'm, I, I do serve on the steering committee. But um, we're hoping to implement some uh, real nice things like a shared town calendar. Um, somewhere where anybody who might be visiting the area for the weekend, or maybe they came home, they want to see family and they're wondering what they can do. Uh, there's one centralized, one-stop shop where they can click and see everything that's going on in all four of the towns in one place. So it's actually something I was working on as recently as today on that initiative. So um, what the EDC has in their budget is a line item that we've held steady for several years um, at five thousand dollars. And this year, I'm assuming that, you know, we can use some or all of that money to help us implement some of the uh, the takeaways from the, the Four Town Plan. Uh, Human Resource Administration and Benefits, um, so there's a little bit of um, offsetting going on here. But books and subscriptions decreased, um, payroll, excuse me, budgeted salary increases went up. Um, HR benefits, so um, FICA, Medicare and pension due to salary adjustments, that's up about ten thousand dollars. And then health insurance, although we had a zero percent rate increase, as I mentioned earlier, the overall um, increase is still about forty grand because that's just the folks that we've um, you know, hired recently. And people come and go and it happens in an organization. But you know, the people that are coming on right now seem to have um, family plans and things like that. So that does impact the overall um, budget. So that's why that's up fifty six thousand dollars overall. And then townwide insurance, that's like liability insurance and cyber insurance. And that went And that went up because of the addition of Birch Grove School back on and cyber insurance policy. And this reflects what I just said there. Okay, and there's the FICA and all these budget charts. And legal services, so we have a couple of lawyers that we work with in town. So we have Rick Conti, our town attorney. We've been heavily utilizing Rick, many things going on. And so we're actually recommending a five thousand dollar, just so we don't go over budget. We're recommending a five thousand dollar increase for Rick the following, the following fiscal year. Legal services on labor attorney personnel, that remains the same. So there's, those are the numbers for those two categories, forty five thousand and six thousand dollars for other services and fees. And then personnel is thirty thousand dollars, so that holds, holds level, holds steady. Probate services, we did, you know, even though probate is, operates in accordance with the statutes of the state. And they have jurisdiction over the probate of a few of the towns, Talon, Wellington, Coventry and Mansfield. We do still, you know, welcome probate, they're, they're in our building. And we, you know, we, we do talk to them about their budget when we, actually, they're usually the first department that we meet with, believe it or not, even though they're sort of a, you know, a small department. But they, they, they do put together a budget every year. Their budget's going up three hundred and twenty-four dollars and that's simply because there's an increase in communications for a WebEx video conferencing subscription due to COVID. And they, they hold their court electronically. And there was an increase in the subscription cost. So they came to us and they said, there's no other changes, that's the only change. So you'll, you'll see that reflected there. Registrar voters, they just had a very busy November as well, as you can imagine. The, when we've developed their budget, they always budget for one election. One primary and two, well, and two referendums. The overall budget increased by seventeen hundred sixty-eight dollars. Temporary help increased by thirty-seven fifty as we added stipends for training deputies to become registrars. And their operating expenses decreased since municipal elections cost less than the presidential one. So they do take into consideration the type of election that's being held in the coming year. Next year is not a presidential year, obviously for a few years. But it is a municipal election cycle coming up in November. So there you see there, we have two registrars, one for each partisan polit- party. And there's the temporary help increase, but they also decreased their printing and professional services and food and clothing. Okay, everybody, I think that's the, let me just verify, yep, that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. Thank you for listening and not interrupting me, I appreciate that. So at this point, you know, I see everybody, thanks everybody for being here. Any, you know, certainly any questions? Maybe if we can do this in a orderly fashion, counsel, and that way we can maybe have the department heads respond to questions as they come about, but thanks again.
So I think it would probably make sense if we want to go through each area. And then everybody, I'll let everybody else ask questions, maybe somebody will ask some of the ones that I have. And then we can save my list of questions. I did send you a copy of the list of questions, Mike, just so you could have an idea. But I know it was late, sorry. So we'll go through and ask questions in order of area and then we can we can double back on anything that we didn't get. So Brenda?
Sure, are you going to name an area first? I don't want to.
Wasn't sure if you had something specific because your hand was up?
Oh, yeah. You know, I, I was just wondering about the area and I, I wanted to express my thanks to everybody that's here. But I can, I'll wait till we do areas, so just.
All right, how about we start with?
One question, I do have one question, I'm sorry. This is a special meeting, so we're limited to what's on the agenda, correct?
Correct, you're limited to just what's, what's on the agenda there. So the three areas that we're talking about tonight are general government, public works and finance.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so I think it's probably easiest, we'll start with general government first, that was the first in the budget book. So does anybody have any questions in the general government area? Brenda?
Yes, first, I want to say thank you to every single person who is on our workforce here in Tallent, your dedication through all these years has greatly appreciated. I've been watching the budget for more than fifteen years since my kids started school. And I've seen year after year that we've been asked to tighten our budget, or tighten our belts, make little changes. And I know that accumulates, you know, each year it might be one or two things, but after fifteen years, that means fifteen to thirty things. I really appreciate everything you're doing. I recognize, you know, everything that you're doing in your dedication for the town. And it's really appreciated, we've really benefited from all the work you do. I just had one comment on page twelve that you had, Mr. Rosen. It might be beneficial to show the breakdown for, for residential and commercial instead of just grouping them all together. I'm not asking for you to do that now, I'm just saying it might be something that in the future people might want to see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to check and make sure that we can do that, I can ask Lisa, but I'll, I'll make note of that, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, again, it's not something I want for this year, I'm just saying it might be something that adds something to the slide for maybe next presentation next year.
Thank you, Brenda. I think Brenda just brought up a good point, though, if you have any questions on anything I have listed as page one through eighty. That's more of the narrative, I think this would probably be the time to, to list those also. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this just upgraded to the new Zoom thing and I, I am all messed up on it.
Did you find, have a hard time finding where your raise hand and all that is?
Yeah, it's unbelievable, you know, I should have upgraded on it, but my problem is I'm trying to figure, because I went through the overall operating budget, the budget books that we had. So a lot of my things are referencing those pages rather than the presentation, so I'm trying to work it out here. Under the general government issue, there's, trying to see where my notes are and find where it is here. Okay, well, one of the questions I had was the insurance increasing in, under general governments by thirty thousand dollars. Is that the, is that, Mike, is that part of the, the cyber risk policy? You know, the, the policy that we have that's also going towards Birch Grove as well, is that's why there is an increase in it?
Is that Mike Wilkinson, do you want to take, I know you, yeah, go ahead, thanks.
Yeah, so there's two reasons really, Lou, so one is we're adding back Birch Grove, which the way we do our insurance, we pool our insurance, so we're splitting that fifty fifty with the board of ed, that's normal, we do that with all things that come on and come off. So there's a cost for that of about fifteen thousand dollars. And then Kerma, who's our main insurer, they are eliminating the, the cyber policy out of our general liability policy. So we're, we're getting a standalone policy for the town and board so that we have coverage for that. So there's going to be a cost, additional cost for that. So those are the two real drivers.
Okay, then that, that's, that was what I was wondering if it's at where it came in. And then, let's see. I'm still going to try and find, well, the one other question I have is for the, regarding the overall fund budget, fund balance, I don't know if that's something that we can address at this point, or if it's if you want to come back to it, where we have the estimated unassigned fund balance that we're using twelve point, twelve point nine five percent, is that correct? Or am I, am I reading that wrong?
Oh, I believe so. What the twelve point nine five percent represents is the percentage of, actually, I'm going to go, I'm going to jump to that slide. It's, give me one second, I'll just jump to that slide. Unless Lisa, do you want to answer it quickly?
Mike, would it be easier for you if you, if, I don't know if it'd be easier not to actually have the budget on your screen?
What page, though?
Well, that's the thing, like, I don't know.
Page twenty-one is where I do some discussion about fund balance.
Yep.
Is that where you're at, Lou?
Well, I was looking at the page, let's see, it was one of the first pages, the, the, after Mike's original thing of fund balance and then it goes goes in, I don't.
So that's, that's the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our overall expenditure. So it's not that we're using twelve point nine five percent, but that's as a percentage of our overall expenditures in town. That's how much fund balance there, you know, maybe Lisa can explain it better. But we, we show that number because you, you want to kind of be in that ten to fifteen percent range and not go under or over. And to, you know, that's considered fiscally strong if you're in that sweet spot. And Lisa, maybe, is there a better way to explain that?
We definitely, we have our policies between ten and seventeen percent and ten and fifteen for unassigned. Certainly, the rating agencies would like to see it much higher than that. But that's where we can reasonably be right now with the size of our community and the ability to keep funds in reserve. The twelve point nine five percent is what I'm estimating. And that would be where I think we're going to end this year. Now, there's so many things that have happened since I did this original estimate, like snowstorms, things like that. So when I do my next analysis, those numbers may change. But with looking at that, I'm looking at a balance of about twelve point nine five of unassigned. That is the money that would be available to be used in emergencies, it's, it's what you want to keep in reserve, you do not want to go below ten percent. Because at that point, we can't use any fund balance going forward. And then if you, if you notice on page twenty-one, I tried to do the next couple of years. I'm working on a much more extensive five-year projection that's going to be much detail, much more detailed, I'm not finished with it yet. But the next couple of years, depending on how much fund balance is used to offset the budget and if everything goes with some of the estimates I've put in here, we're looking at going down to about eleven point four percent. Lou, does that kind of help?
Yeah, it, it does. I'm, I'm just tracking, because I'm just trying to keep an eye as far as how much that fund balances and where, you know. Like, you know, I've, I've said it before, where I'd like to try and keep that, you know, well above where we are right now, where we were before, or where we, looks like we may be heading. And I just want to make sure that, that we're still in, you know, somewhat okay waters, let's put it that way.
And Lou, I can share, because I, you know, I've been here for, this is my second cycle now. And I was here when the, we did the credit rate, rating agency call last year. And right away, one of the first things they point to is, you know, where's your fund balance, what's, what are your, like, you know, outstanding projects? How much cash are you planning to use? So we work with them, we explain to them the overall picture and model of what we have going on in Tallent. You know, we've explained to them that, you know, obviously last year was a, was a weird year with COVID and, and fund balance and this, you know, they, they still reaffirmed our triple A bond rating. And they kind of just said, you know, just keep an eye on things, but, you know, we understand it's a weird year, but, you know, you don't want to dip too low on your spending and you don't want to dip too high on it either. You know, because the one thing too is if we were to somehow lose our triple A rating, we would be paying so much more on interest costs when we go to borrow projects, it may even dissuade us from borrowing in the future. So we wouldn't want to jeopardize that. But we are very cognizant of that, we're trying to keep an eye on it. When we recommended about the fire truck, ultimately, it was probably a more favorable decision to use half and half rather than one or the other because it smoothed it over that way.
All right, thank you. And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, that if I jumped around on that.
Don't even worry about it.
I'm just, you know, trying to, trying to get everything correlated with where we have on our budget book, so. But I'm sure I'll have more questions, but that's good for now. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Take your time, this is not like a one, this is not a one and done, one-shot deal, so, you know, that's fine. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking at page three, I'm curious about the investment income. We have six years of investment income here, the first three years shown are sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Then it jumps up to one ninety, then up to two sixty-five, now we're back down to sixty-five. So I'm wondering if we can get a little clarity around either those two outlier years, why they were so high, or why we are down two hundred thousand this year. Taking into consideration that even despite the pandemic last year, the financial markets were strong. Are we investing? Is investment income coming from the financial markets, or is there some other vehicle that we're using here? If we can get a little clarification around that, I appreciate it.
So John, that's a really good question, I'm glad you asked it, because I think that's a lot of people's misconception about the interest rates and how they work. So I know Lisa, Lisa will be able to fill everybody in on the differences between the, the, the public market and the market that the governments have, so.
Yes. The interest rates over the past few years, for one reason that some of our interest earnings in the past years was so high was because we did have some extra cash on hand that was floating with projects that were in process but had not been completed. So as those came off the books, we, you know, we had debt service money idle that we were able to invest. But that wasn't the biggest brunt of it, especially the last couple of years. We were doing phenomenal, better than we had ever anticipated at with interest rates between two, two and a half percent. And right after COVID hit, the rates that we went down to, if we were lucky, was a point one, point two, point three, not even a percent on our idle investments. Now, by state statute, we are very limited as to what we can invest operating funds in. So it's secure, certain secure certificates of deposit. There's the state investment fund, which used, used to outperform anything else. Now it's the worst one, but no matter where we turn, we try to do marketing with different banks to see what type of investments they have that we're legally allowed to invest in, such as T-bills, things like that. The rates are just horrible right now and we were pretty much expecting it, but not as bad as this year. We're looking at close to a two hundred thousand dollar plus shortfall in this year's budget for, because of the reduced earnings.
Okay, so, so the investment income that we're talking about, these are, these are interest-bearing accounts, they're not tied to financial markets and the ups and downs that we can typically see in the financial markets, is that correct?
That, that is correct, we are not allowed to invest in things like stocks and bonds and, and, you know, the various risky type of investments. We are allowed to do that with more so like the capital non-recurring type funds. But when it comes to the general fund, operating funds and cash taxes, things like that, we're very limited as to what we can invest in. So it's just strictly certificates of deposit, treasury bills, money market. The, the most important thing is keeping a dollar net asset value.
Okay, very good, thank you, Lisa.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to highlight, I did also, I think you guys, Sherman, you did submit some questions in advance, and so I appreciate, I believe the two ones that I did ask were incorporated into the presentation, which was a lot of questions surrounding that project manager and grants administrator position in terms of kind of the goals and functions and how they'd help alleviate other staff to focus more on their jobs. As well as if the EDC would use their professional services line item, or if they need more funding to implement any recommendations for the Four Town Economic Vitality Plan. But one question I did just have come up, going back to that proposed position, is going over our town council goals. Under policies, item number three was examine the advantage of public-private partnerships. And this might not be a question for Talon, as I said, Rosen, it might be for the rest of the council. But would this position possibly fulfill a portion of that goal by having a dedicated individual that works on potentially private or, you know, nonprofit grant writing in addition to the state and federal grants? And I don't know if, I guess maybe the only question that'd be through Mike is, is do any of our department heads do grant writing? Or, you know, you know, that kind of work with private organizations that, you know, fall outside of the normal steep grants or federal aid grants?
I would, you know what, that's a good question for probably Bev when she's here with us tomorrow. Because she's the main, well, Lisa, do you have that? I see you're raising your hand.
Trying to jump in to help you here. There, there are some departments that do. Trying to jump in to help you here. Um, there, there are some departments that do go for some private grants of update. Foundation for Public Giving is one of them that comes off the top of my head. Um, there's different little grants here or there that, um, for example, our, um, senior services director just applied for one. And it was more of a, a private foundation where she was able to get more. And I would certainly think that this position, um, would include looking for grants wherever they possibly can, not just state and federal. That, that's my opinion, but certainly that's with the manager. But I would think he, he would be thinking if there's anything out there that they can access, they'd certainly try to work on it. But there are some department heads are working on it right now.
I, I believe the public safety department as well. I think they try for, uh, you know, they look for all sorts of grants that are out there related to fire services and EMS. Um, and I know John, I believe is with us tonight, but, um, you know, they, they do that as well. Um, is that right, Chief? I see you just popped your camera on.
Yeah, we try to, uh, because we have a corporation, so we have a nonprofit corporation that we can apply for. We just have to be careful if it's something that's going for funding, that's something that's tied into the municipality. But, uh, we're able, we're eligible to apply for some nonprofit, um, grants when we actually just applied for two of them. So we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Okay, no, great. That, that covers the main questions I have for now, at least for this section. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Mike, um, starting on page ten. There's a, I just wanted to take a moment if you, if you could. Um, I understand it, but I under- I think it would be good for the public to understand the difference between the expense, uh, increase, uh, the total expenditure increase of two point two six and then the mill rate increase of three point five percent and why those amounts are different.
Uh, sure. I mean, I guess this, maybe this is kind of like more philosophical. I mean, the thing is that expenditures aren't the only thing that, um, you know, that drive uh, the budget. There's also the revenue side, you know, the, your revenues have to equal your expenditures. But when there's revenue being reduced due to the, the means that we talked about earlier and those expenditures are still there that need to be funded, you have to find a way to fund them. And if you exhaust any other alternatives to funding such as, so let's, I'll just, let's just use the interest account because we just talked about that. And that's just one example, you know, there's ECS, there's the mill rate, are these the, uh, re- reduced usage of the fund balance. But if you just use the interest account, so that's two hundred thousand dollars we had last year that we don't have this year. And we still have the same amount of expenditures, if not more, and generally there's more because things go up in price. There's contractual increases, there's, um, markets that are commodity markets. So you don't, you didn't have two hundred thousand dollars, you don't have two hundred thousand dollars now that you had last year. So in order to make up that gap, you have to raise taxes because that's how you, you know, you, you have to increase the mill rate in order to get more taxes in to make up that gap. Now, we've been, we've been trying, you know, last year we had a zero mill rate increase, which basically meant even though there were increases to expenditures, we made it work with, um, either the, the revenue model we had and we used a little bit more of the fund balance than we traditionally would. And this year, you know, we're trying to ease down on that as we talked about last year during our process, that a five hundred thousand dollar reliance on fund balance every year and you're going to dry up, drain down your fund balance real quick. You know, we just talked about being around the twelve-nine and eventually the twelve-two range. If you relied five hundred thousand dollars each year, that would, that would really eat up that account very quickly. So we're trying to be, um, responsible, obviously responsible stewards of the finances in town. And, uh, maybe if, uh, Lisa, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add, but the reason that the mill rate is higher than just the overall, um, expenditure is because there are other sources of, um, you know, besides just taxes, there are other things that we use to pay our bills. Interest income, um, is one of them. Um, like I said, there is some reliance on fund, this grants, there's all state aid. Uh, there's the, I, I could, you know, education cost sharing grant. And if revenues decrease and you don't have them, but you still have the same expenditures or more, you got to close that gap, you got to make ends meet somehow. And either you reduce expenditures or you increase your revenues. And, uh, and then one of the things that the municipalities have the ability to do in order to increase revenues is to raise taxes. Um, and Lisa, I don't know if there's anything else you can add to that. I'm just trying to.
I think it was pretty.
Pretty well, pretty much.
I think you got it, huh, Lisa?
I'm, I'm, my, my grad school professors would be very proud.
Yep, earning that master's in public administration there. Got it, nailed it, done. All right. Um, next on page eleven, uh, I'm just a little confused on this one here. So we had a net grand list, uh, increase of approximately eleven million dollars. But on page eleven, it says we're resulting in a, in a loss of three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty-four eight dollars. But then on page fifty-eight, it says it's a net gain of that three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. I'm assuming that it's a, a gain, but I just want to double check. Lisa's laughing in the corner, so.
Assuming that was a typo then.
I apologize for that. I made note of it. Um, yes, it should be a, um, yeah, it, it should be a game. I think when we were rushing so quickly to try to get this done, some, some of the words from last year stayed in and should have come out.
Not a criticism that figure, you, you know, we know it's a game, we can update it that it's a game before we get to the final books, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm making the note of it right now. I apologize for that.
Um, on page seventeen, um, uh, I like the charts that we have here. It shows, you know, the, over the last fourteen years, the increase, the overall, the twenty-two point four percent increase in the Board of Ed and the fifteen point six percent increase in the, um, town operating expenses. I'm wondering if you could provide a chart or some information that also shows us, um, the change in the state grant revenue and also one for the total debt. So we can see what's happened with the loss of, uh, grant revenues and then the, um, the, uh, the debt path that we have, that we've been on.
I, I thought we had something similar to that. I'm just actually, I'm just trying to look quickly. If we don't have it, I think we could show that. I know we showed up our reliance on grants over time as a chart.
Well, you just had it in your presentation, which I think was really good, you know, but I'd like to see that if we can in some kind of like that put out over the same timeframe.
I'm trying to find it. I know.
It's, well, it's in the present, it's in the presentation that we showed tonight.
It was number valued in the presentation, not a grant either way, but, uh, I think it would just be beneficial for people to see that because when you look at these numbers and you see the growth, um, or even the average, but then you see the corresponding mill rate, it's good to understand that, you know, when you were looking at that page, I was just doing some quick calculations and well, how much did we go from like almost thirteen million down to like nine million? We've lost like four million in, in state grants just in the last so many years. So I think it's just.
Go to page sixty-one, Cammy. It's under the revenue section, um, well, sixty, page sixty has some of the, I think what you're talking about.
Yes, that looks, that looks right.
I had to find it. I'm sorry, it took a couple minutes here.
The only thing that, that doesn't show the mill rate though, but I s- but.
I'm just thinking, you know, that same format that we have there, it kind of would show the, show the corresponding other, the, the drop.
Um, I'll make a note of it. I think we can maybe repurpose the slide and, and to the budget message, yeah.
Um, okay, on page nineteen, I'm sorry, I got to get back from sixty-one now, sorry. Nineteen, okay, on page nineteen, um, I noticed one of the assumptions on here. Let's see. Well, well, first of all, um, I want to get ahead of this one before it goes anywhere. The, uh, senior tax relief program going from the six point four million to the six point three five five million. That's just a decrease in usage, correct? Where we don't have a budget, we're not reducing the budget. It's just, it's reflective of the people who are in the program and the max amount allowed by the ordinance. And it's just people have come off the plan, correct?
I, I, well, I, I think that's correct. I, I would say, Lisa, does that sound right to you?
Yes, and Jason's here as well. It's, it's a reduction due to, you know, some people have passed away. Um, some people have fallen off the list because their income has increased. Um, some people are just, you know, not eligible, but certainly in no way did we decrease any, um, exemptions to anybody. It was just an all natural occurrence. And Jason, if you want to pop in, if I said anything incorrect, please pop in.
Uh, Lisa's correct. It's, um, it's, it's just a, um, a loss of a few applicants, basically. Um, not necessarily from income loss, uh, but as our population um, gets older, we've lost a few people and, um, some of our new applicants that are just reaching the, um, the age um, don't qualify because they're over income. So we've, the people that are, um, staying in town as they reach retirement age and further and could apply for this program, um, have made too much money. So, um, I guess it's a good thing. Um, but, um, it really is just because our elders have, are slowly, um, passing on.
Thank you. Um, the corrections and assessment appeals staying around the seven point five million. Um, I'm assuming that has mainly to do with, uh, anticipated increase in applications for crumbling foundations.
Uh, no. Um, I think, I'm not sure if that's, I'm not, I don't, I don't know what you're looking at, uh, to be honest, but the that line item might be our, um, corrections. Um, that are just our normal course of the year. So that's automobile corrections. Um, any other corrections that we might do through the course of the year. The BAA would actually have gone down. Um, we only had uh, fifteen applications this year for crumbling foundations and right now I have three on my desk for, that will go through the board. Um, as last year, I think we had about fifteen that went through the board and seventy, seventy-five, maybe that went, that came off the regular list. So, um, we've had far less applications this year and, um, that number would go down. And Lisa and I worked on that. That number definitely went down from what we had last year.
It did, and that was one of my questions. Um, in nineteen twenty, we had three million and twenty twenty-one, we had one point one million. This year we're going down to three hundred thousand dollars. So that was a little concerning.
Yeah, at this point, um, you know, people will have the ability to appeal until, um, the twentieth of this month. And given I only have three applications so far, um, the average decrease is about seventy-five grand. That's, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe. Um, I don't expect we get many more, but it's possible.
Right, so, um, so this is just really a slowing of what we're seeing in applications.
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe that, um, most people came out last year because as houses were visibly being raised and corrected, um, there was a, there was a big amount, uh, a big rush last year to get your applications in. And, um, we've just kind of seen a, a lot less visibility. Maybe people aren't out as much uh, driving around and they're not seeing these houses that have been lifted. Um, I don't know, but Tallinn has been in the lead for so long. It's nice to have a, uh, slowdown a little bit.
I just got really nervous seeing three hundred thousand there after, you know, the three million and the one point one million and then seeing three hundred thousand, you know, that. And that, that definitely is part of our revenue driver since it's net grand list. So I just wanted to, just wanted to double check you on that one there, Jason.
No, I, I mean, it could definitely go up to five hundred thousand if, if all of a sudden I get a bunch more applications, but uh, I don't see that happen. It's, they really came in slow. Um, and even the fifteen that I got during the regular, um, year before the grand list was done. There was a, a rush at the end. I really only had, if you look at the, um, managers' report from month to month, we didn't have more than ten for quite a while. And then all of a sudden at the end, I get a flurry of them. So, so I, I really don't expect to see many in the next ten days.
I'd be happy with that. So thank you very much. That helps.
Sure.
Uh, page twenty-two, uh, this is more of a note, I guess, uh, Lisa. And, um, I was looking at these numbers and I appreciate the work that has gone into this. And I just wanted to point out on here, um, that, let's see, where, where was I on this? Use of fund balance, that was the line I was looking at. So I just want to point out that we have steadily been using the fund balance every year. Um, and it's been higher in the last five years than prior before. So, um, we are making responsible use of the fund balance, um, to offset some of the losses that we've had in other areas. So I just wanted to say, I really, I appreciated this, this chart in here. Uh, then I go to page, let's see, twenty-six. Um, actually, I'll save that one. And twenty-nine, that's those two. So I was looking at the, um, the full-time equivalence between both the town and the, the, um, the town side and the Board of Ed side. And it looks like, uh, both areas are going up heads. Um, and in fact, the, the Board of Ed, looking at page twenty-six there, has gone up about twenty employees in the last five years and we're going up, um, what, about two point three five? Oh, well, I can't read my notes here. Hold on. Oh, the town, um, it says the town added two point three five. Um, this year versus last year, we added point one. So no, no headcount reduction was predicted in the last budget. Seventy-nine point one six plus one point two is eighty point three six. The budget says it's seventy-nine point nine three. So I wasn't sure, um, on the headcount there. I can send you something.
I, I see the seventy-nine nine three. I'm not following though. I mean, I just, I, I, I know I can tell you, we're, we're the grant manager, the seventh firefighter. That's the only positions that I know that we added.
We've added the two point and then we added a, a, a three five someplace. And one of the other sheets, I found the point three five and it just didn't add up, but I'll, I'll, um.
This was something that Mike, uh, puts together as far as the, uh, FTE pages, but I know a couple of years ago in the fire department, we added a part-time secretarial position. So that would have increased it like a portion of a point, whatever. Um, last year we added a firefighter. So that increased one last year. Um, and then this year would be the grants manager.
Yeah, let me, let me look back at my notes.
Last year, but we, we, we eliminated the, uh, engineering position.
Right, we eliminated the engineering. So, okay. Let me look back at my notes on that one because I have down that I, I found like it was a disconnect somewhere. So I'll, I'll get back to you on that one. I can't remember exactly what it was now.
Madam Chair, if I may, before you go, going for it, I'm trying to, uh, keep track of where we are on, uh, as far as you're referring to the pages in the budget book that we have, the printed version of it. Yeah, because I'm just trying to, I'm going back and forth between the two women. All the one on the, uh, the presentation and then the one on, uh, online aren't exactly matching up, but okay. Yes, thank you.
No problem. Um, so on page thirty-six, in regard to the future mill rate growth, the estimated, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I'm just going to ask that we continue to look for expenses that are COVID-related that can be moved out of the budget. Um, because that federal relief package just got passed and uh, Mike, I shared with you the initial runs, which I know we've seen some change. So I'm waiting for the new runs, uh, for the town and for the school side. So we want to be sure that we're not inflating the budget, um, for any of these expenses. So three point five this year with a projected three point nine increase next year. Um, well, it's just a projection. It, it means we really need to understand what is being included and assumed as the increases. Um, so we're making sure that we're looking to find efficiencies and we're not going to put the COVID-related things in here. So, um, at one point, Mike, we had talked about reviewing the town services to see if there was anything that's really no longer used or could be done differently or, um, like a change in any processes. Uh, is that something that's still ongoing?
Yes, I've brought that up at several, uh, department head meetings. Um, I, I, so it didn't make it in time for this budget. I don't, you know. So as you saw, there's a lot of departments that have no change this year. Um, but, uh, I could tell you too, that I specifically asked if anybody could identify COVID-related expenses as well, and we're tracking that. Um, we've received feedback from Public Works, um, Public Safety. Uh, the library and obviously recreation was severely impacted on the revenue side. Our interest income was severely impacted on the revenue side. So we are tracking things that could be applied towards that two-year grant if and when it's awarded to us, uh, from the federal government. And I know it's a two-year grant, so we may be able to soften for two years. But anything that, you know, if there's anything two or three years from now, we'll have to add it back into, on our shoulders. And that may spike that mill rate two, three years from now. Um, that's also true of, uh, staff. So, you know, I mentioned earlier um, that there were a couple of cuts I had to make. that there were a couple of cuts I had to make on the town side of the budget. Two of them were converting, that were quests to convert part-time people that we currently employ to full-time status. And both of those positions would have, the, the conversion from part-time to full-time would have been extremely helpful with regards to COVID-19. So if there's a way that we can fund those roles using this COVID money, I'd still like to entertain that outside of this budget process and their benefits to make them full-time. But then again, if we do that, then two years from now, we're going to have to get ready to have that transition back on to us.
Right. And that's, that's a fair point to make. You know, if it's a resource that we're going to keep over past the COVID point, right now we could fund part of an increase with the money that's coming because it is, it's very high level vague and vague description. But if it's somebody that we're going to keep on after COVID, you know, like if it's employing, you know, X amount more cleaning services or something like that, I would assume that after time that's going to go away. But if it's a person that we're going to keep, then we're going to have to figure out, like you said, a way to kind of smooth it back into the budget in that time period. But I think it's important for us to just make sure that we're tracking everything that we can possibly put against this money because it's very specific and what we can spend it on and how. So just making sure that we're kind of have that in the back of our, of our minds. Page forty-seven, I had a question on on the adopted, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one adopted, there's a contribution from the fund balance of six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in zero from the municipal stabilization fund. But then there was like the proposed and then the budget. So is this all like twenty twenty-one, we did use a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the?
One, one fifteen.
A hundred and, you're right, a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the stabilization fund, right?
The a hundred and fifteen thousand from municipal stabilization is included in that hundred and fifteen. It wasn't from, five hundred thousand was from fund balance. We had lumped it together the way it printed out in our financial reports and the person who put it in here for me lumped the two numbers together. So the six fifteen should be five hundred thousand.
Right.
And we'll fix that. And the hundred and fifteen thousand should be under the stabilization fund.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. I just wanted to, to make sure.
And the one-ten, which is being proposed to be used this year is the remainder of what's in that, from the two, originally was two twenty-five. So this, this would zero out that account.
No problem. Alright, I had a question on page fifty-three on the calculation that you used. And I think I answered it, but I just want to be sure. I'm looking at the, the tax portion piece. It says that the grant and late, the grand list increased by ten million eight forty-one, eight fifty. When I look at page nineteen, the calculations are saying it increased by ten, three sixty-three, nine fifty. So that's about a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar difference between page nineteen and page fifty-three. And also if the budget goes up to the thirty-seven point one three, the actual revenue collected on the new amount would be four hundred and two, five fifty-eight, I think. And not the three fifty-six, eight seventy. Are you calculating the three fifty-six, eight seventy on the three, thirty-six oh five mill rate?
Yes, I know we were using the thirty-six oh five for any loss in revenue because we didn't have, I'm pretty sure that's how we did it. And
Okay, on page nineteen, sorry, I'm trying to get there now. Alright, the, the new grand list total, the, the change in the total is to ten million, three sixty-three, nine fifty-five.
Hold on a minute.
How are you getting that? Oh, I'm doing your calculation. Hold on.
Oh, I have to add the, you have to add the motor vehicle supplemental in. Okay, one, two, eight, six.
So I'm looking at the difference between.
Jason, you want to jump in on the grand list change?
I, I think I'm just looking at the difference between the one, two, six, one, seven, four, nine, two, five. Hold on, my number is not right.
I don't have supplemental numbers in front of me, but what I have for a change is ten million, eight forty-one, eight fifty.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, 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 oh. Jason's number is after Board of Assessment Appeals. Okay, I, I know what the, why you can't make a match. But the actual number, ten, eight forty-one, eight fifty, is what legally has changed in the overall grand list amount. What happened is last year, we, we never have the BAA, the assessment appeals at the time that the budget is put together. So the amount on page nineteen was before Board of Assessment Appeals. And then the, the amount that we're discussing here is really after Board of Assessment Appeals versus the number we have now. It's how we do it every year. So the amount on page fifty-three is the actual amount that changed. And you were referring to page nineteen.
Yep.
But was there some, somewhere else you're referring to?
No, fifty-three and nineteen. And then I was just questioning the, the, we had said that the tax revenue was going to go up by the three, where the heck is it? Back here. The three ninety-one. And I just wanted to confirm, the three ninety-one is based on the thirty-six oh five mill rate.
That is correct. It, it does say that right there too. It's based on the twenty twenty-one mill rate of thirty-six oh five.
Okay. Alright. And I wrote the next line here, the BAA adjustments amount for the account for the differences above.
There you go. Figured it out.
See, I, I thought so. I just want to get confirmation.
Intelligent on that. Thank you.
Fifty-eight. Oh, no, I already got ahead of that one. Fifty-nine. So in fifty-nine, with the grants, youth services grant is going up and miscellaneous is going down. Do we know what's driving that, Mike? Like the, what is the one that's going down? Is it just random grants?
That's a good question. I'd have to, give me a moment. I'll see if I can find any backup on that. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
If not, you can, you can.
I'm trying to remember. I have to pull my spreadsheet on what makes that up precisely. And I think, but the, the youth one, that we did get a little bit extra money, according to the NC done, that there was some extra that were being allocated. So we have projected that into the budget going forward. So that one did go up as just by what the state is giving us compared to what they had given us in the past.
Yep.
But the miscellaneous, where I'd have to look at my spreadsheets and I can probably look at that shortly to see what was being cut.
Okay, you can get that, you can get that back to me, Lisa. You don't have to do it right now.
Alright.
Alright, in general government on page eighty-one. Do the assumptions for the town council numbers assume that we're, we're back in person?
So what would, which, which one would be impacted by that? Like the office, which one?
Professional services, you know, we're not paying anybody to film right now. You know, we're paying, uh, we're paying, and, and obviously, um, we're not paying that to this current year. But we are paying the, Lisa, the recording clerk. So is this, this is assuming that we're going back in full-time in person?
Yes.
Okay. Because it, I don't know, it's going up. Well, if you look at the actuals from what we're actually spending, last time we were at like almost thirty-three thousand and now we're saying we're going to be at, like, they're almost thirty-eight. So I guess I'm wondering just if there's any room in that one there. Let's see. And then the, for the town manager on page eighty-four, the forty thousand increase, that's the half year for the grant writer. So this projected position, I want to, we've talked about this one in the past. For me, I think it's, it's a good position because I think it's going to free up a lot of Bev's time and also people in finances time and stuff like that. And one of the things that I'm concerned with is making sure that this person is getting new grant opportunities above and beyond what we already have to pay for themselves kind of a thing. But on the flip side of that too, I'm wondering what we can expect in the way of this relief off of Bev and in the finance area. So obviously not tonight because she's not here, but I'm hoping we can maybe talk about what this is going to free her up to do, what this is going to free up the human resources area. And Lisa, I know you've got some people in your area that are involved with the whole grant writing too. So this should help alleviate some pressures there for you also.
I, I can, I can respond. I mean, you can certainly ask Bev again tomorrow, but she actually did provide me some language around this, which is, you know, if you consider it, Bev's been a long time employee of the town and she's always been someone who's always steps up to the plate and always takes on more. Sometimes then she can, you know, you know, she always wants to take on more and learn more. So she's been doing her best to, you know, to manage everything that she does. She often comes in on weekends and stays late at night to do grant paperwork or unfinished work. So and she's also, even when she takes time off, even when she's on vacation, she's returning emails and, and working with staff on grants and things like that. So she would envision that the grant writer would sort of relieve the pressure valve on her to have to do sort of the, you know, above and beyond type of stuff, especially as she transitions to the tail end of her career, which she's talked about two, three years from now, but also be here to, you know, download the institutional knowledge to the new person when they come on board. So she helped give, you know, get them a leg up on, on how it works around here. So she also mentioned, let me just get the language here. She said that not having the other responsibilities will give me more time to search out additional programs and enhance what we already have. That's what she wrote in her email to me.
I think that's good, especially since, you know, we have the new task force with mental health and substance use and that. I think being able to kind of look at what opportunities we have out there from a human services perspective, being able to have Bev be able to focus more in on doing the human services thing. I think that should hopefully help bring us some, some new services hopefully. And like I said, Lisa, I'm sure there's some people on your side. You don't have to raise your hand, girl. I'm, I'm asking you questions non-stop, so.
No, yeah, that, I mean, between Chris and myself, Chris, Chris Jordan is also online this evening. We manage the LoCIP grants. We do some various grants for public work sometimes, the town aid oversight of that.
FEMA.
FEMA, we've most recently taken on the fire department has for years done a lot of it. And with this COVID impact, he, he was just too overburdened over there. So I offered to help him with the FEMA and I'm also trying to do the storm to see ISA, ISA, whatever it is.
ISA.
Yeah, so, so we're kind of involved with all of that as well. And as far as that miscellaneous grant, I figured out what it was. That miscellaneous grant includes HVCC, which is the, like a dial-a-ride sort of thing where we get funding back from that. That is okay. But we also collect money from the state of Connecticut for tickets that they issue on the highways and on the local roads regarding for speeding, things like that. So the trending over the years is starting to go down, especially in this year. So we trended it down a little bit to reflect that.
So that's actually a reduction in the HVCC?
No, no, no. HVCC is pretty much staying the same. But it's the, the police tickets. They're, they're combined in that. They're combined in that same line. So that's trending downward a little bit.
Alright, that makes total sense to me.
People on the roads.
Yeah, I, yep. Alright, so again, this, having this grant writing position will help free you guys up. Although I'm hoping that with all the grant stuff that we have, that they're going to have the opportunity to go and find new grants also.
I, I would certainly agree with that. I think that, you know, we would like to hire somebody that has experience and maybe knows the pipelines that we don't know. Because a lot of the department heads know their world. They know their subject matter expertise. They don't know what else is out there, although everyone can Google something, obviously. But, you know, the, I'm hoping that we can find somebody that has some experience either working at a nonprofit or a five oh one C three that knows where to look for opportunities or, or is on distribution lists already for, you know, nonprofits or whatever. So yes, I think that in time, get them on the ground. Let's, let's acquaint them to, to what we do cyclically and then also talk about how can they pump in some new grant money as well. Because even just easing the burden of the project management piece and the oversight and the audit, that's going to be a huge help, just to have another pair of hands helping that out.
Perfect. On eighty-six, the five thousand dollars for the EDC, is that, is that the continuation of the four-town piece of it, the five thousand dollars?
So that, that money, and actually as we spoke with the EDC the other day too, so they, I'm just trying to, here it is, I found it. So professional services, yeah, they, they have fluctuated. Early on, they had a twenty thousand dollar line item. I think that was to do a study of some sort. But since then, they've had a constant five thousand dollar line item for purchased professional services. The main usage of that in the coming fiscal year is to put towards any buy-in that Talon may need to have, not to, not to pay for the study, but to pay for any implementation measures. So when we're on these four-town economic steering committee groups, there's always talk, you know, we're always watching, it's a bunch of municipal officials and we're all, you know, we're trying to watch the budget, right? So if a question comes up about, that's a nice idea, but is it going to cost money? Well, this account would be for things that potentially would be implementation measures that might have a cost to them that aren't necessarily free. To, just today, earlier, we had a group meeting about, can we create a, a common community calendar that all four towns might be able to link to? And then the questions immediately started, who's going to pay for it? Who's servers are going to run on? Is it going to be hosted on a standalone website? There's always, cost is always a thing. So we, that, this, this account would be a catch-all for that. And we just looked at the first year's worth of takeaways from the four-town plan. And there's not a lot that necessarily drive cost. It's a lot about getting on the ground and organizing and doing subcommittees. But we do think that there may be some need to hire for branding or marketing or logo type things. So there, there is going to be some monetary measures. So this five thousand will help us come to the table.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at it and that because we haven't spent it. In the, well, no, actually we have, we have, we spent it on the four-town economic thing, but my impression was I thought that was going away.
Well, the stud, the study is paid for, but now we gotta do stuff. We gotta do what the plan said.
We study and we do. We study and we do. Yes, perfect. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. Page ninety-one. HR benefits and admin, the assumption behind unemployment comp going up from twenty-five hundred actual in nineteen twenty, sixty-six, sixty-four, and twenty-one, twenty-two. Where are we for, where are we for projections on that for twenty twenty-one? Because workman's comp, well, that's the workman's comp. Is that the workman's comp insurance? I think that's the, no, what am I looking at? I'm sorry. Hold on. I want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Page ninety-one, HR benefits and admin. Assumption behind unemployment comp, yeah, unemployment comp going up. Oh, unemployment comp. So we were at twenty-five oh one last year. This year we have thirty-seven, seventy-eight built into the budget and And next year we're going, we're almost doubling it to six thousand six hundred and sixty-four for unemployment compensation.
So, um, you know, obviously it's very hard to anticipate unemployment compensation dependent on the economy. So we use a rolling average, a seven-year rolling average on how we estimate what it's gonna be. Um, so that's how we handle it. Um, this year hasn't been as bad as we thought it was gonna be. Um, but that's how we estimate each year. So, uh, it really depends on how the rolling average goes and, and. Uh, that's what we've used in the past.
Now, Mike, is that the, um, is that the unemployment rate that we're getting from the state? Or are you guys on a separate unemployment? Cause I know one of the things that, um. That I'm looking into, that we're looking at is how COVID is infecting the unemployment, um, the whole entire unemployment fund. And the, um, deferment of that for people who had to lay off people there, they were expecting insurance rates to kind of go through the roof. So are you guys under that same plan as regular, um, businesses in that?
Yes, we're under the state laws. Again, if someone, if someone's unemployed, um. You know, that we're in the same pool. Um, and again, if someone has a, if someone has a part-time job with us and they have a full-time job with, with, uh, someone else. And they lose the full-time job, we're, we're still in that pool for unemployment. So, um, yeah, we're, we're in the same boat.
Alright, so hopefully we'll make him maybe see some relief in that, but, um, we don't know that yet. So, alright, that makes sense. So we're using a seven-year rolling average on it. Alright, thank you. Um, page ninety-three. So in the service contact area, again, we went from fifteen thousand dollars to an assumed twenty thousand dollars this year. And then we're going up again next year. Um. Do we know what's driving that? You mentioned print contracts. But did we actually go from the fifteen thousand last year to the twenty thousand that we have in the budget this year? Are we on track to spend that?
Yeah, we are on track. I'm, I'm trying to look, uh, I've got like three computers open at the same.
Girl, I know, you sound like me. I'm always like NASA.
Um, so I'm trying to get to that one. Um. So far in that line item, we've spent, uh, well, this was as of the end of January, so it's even more now. Um, spent about twelve. Twelve thirteen thousand so far, and it's probably higher than the spreadsheet I'm looking at. And I'm projecting we're probably gonna spend the whole twenty thousand. And, uh, I'm, I'm looking at, when I look at the detail of that account. Um, we did have some printers and, and things that came on, online that increased all of that. But it's certainly a lot less costly than not having it by buying all the toner and the ink all separately. Um, we saved thousands of dollars by implementing this new program.
Um, okay, so next, uh, for the fuel oil. So in seventeen eighteen, we had a high of about seventy-five hundred in actuals, then eighteen nineteen, we went down to twenty-four hundred. Nineteen twenty thirty-eight hundred, um, and we're assuming eighty-one hundred this year. Um. We just had like a, a super low gas thing, but I thought we also, didn't we locked in prices? That was for, that was for diesel fuel.
Wasn't that for diesel and heating?
Well, that's what I guess I'm looking at.
Gasoline, we're estimating to be increased. Um, this year we may have some savings with, um. We were shut down for a little bit, so the vehicles weren't being used as much, but some were. Um, in this area that, that fall under this particular li- line item. But next year we are anticipating, um. An increase in the fuel price and that's what's driving that increase there.
Remember, we do gasoline on a fit, remember Lisa, we do gasoline on a fist, on a calendar year too.
Right, right. That's why I said we estimated it with the blended rate for what we're doing now. Plus where we think it's gonna be and then we calculate like a rate where we think it's gonna end up based on those two blended numbers.
And do we lock in a price on that, Mike?
On gasoline?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah, we're locked in, um, on it, but it's on a calendar year where the other ones are on fiscal years. So we have to take into account half a year that we don't really know what it's gonna be at.
Okay, um, alright. The, on page ninety-five, the, the decrease for the eleven thousand dollars on the, um. And the, the server. So this was the one that we funded, um, out of savings last year, right?
We funded one out of savings and the other one was supposed to come out of, uh, this year if I recall correctly. And, um, so what we did and what we had done last, uh, in this year's budget. Was reduce the amount of computers that we were going to buy this year to, to change the inventory as we do each year.
Yep.
Um, for the older ones, you know, we, we passed down like, you know, big brother to big sis, to little sister or little brother. Um, and so what happened, um. Was, you know, we put back in the computers that we have to get, but we took out the server, the one server. Cause we needed to get two servers replaced.
Uh, uh, okay. I thought, so this is not, it's not being removed. It's just that we funded it ahead of time.
One server is being, the server is being removed from this budget. That, that reflects the, the net amount. There. So it, it does reflect a, a reduction for the amount of one server.
Okay. Alright, um, next, and the last one I have for general government is on page one oh five and probate. So, um, and I'm trying to remember from last year, uh, in service contracts, we went up to twenty-three hundred last year. I believe that was for print, printer correct or printing. It was a, something like that. Um, and then we also went up for document maintenance to four thousand. So we went from a spend of nineteen twenty of eighty-seven hundred and we're looking at fifteen thousand now. So I just wanted to go back and relook at the service contracts and the document maintenance. So everybody understood exactly what those increases were for.
I can look at the detail. If I recall correctly, I think one of them had to do with a, a new copier that they needed for the office. Cause the other one failed. So I think, uh, part of it might be the lease, but I have to really look at that. And then the document maintenance was, um, definitely the number of, um. Records that they have to, um. Copy or, or not copy like copy, it's for their formal documentation, sort of like the town clerk does. That they had a significant amount more and it's trending more and. That's where their costs have head up and I'm trying to see where we're trending right now.
You know, that was gonna be my next question.
If you wanna move to your next one, I'll, I'll, uh, try to pull it up here and get right back to you.
Okay, that's the end of my, um, of my general government. So, um. Let's see the next area that we have. Uh, well, Lisa, do you want us to stay with you and go to finance or do you want us to go to public works?
Why don't you go ahead and go to public works so I can look up the probate thing? Or actually, I'm just getting on probate right now if, uh, if you want me to just address it right now and get that done.
Yep.
Okay, um. Alright. They're about halfway through the service contract amount and. I'm still waiting to see what else they're gonna have in there, but right now they're about halfway through. It does have to do with their, um, that copier. That's what that was about. And let's see the next one.
Document maintenance is really, it was, it just jumped really big.
Yep, um. Bear with me. Yep, they're, right now they have about fifteen hundred of it spent. But they were saying that they were trending. Higher than that and that's the microfilming and laser fish cost. Now what happens is, um, they, the state sends bills every, I think it's every quarter. So we haven't received all the bills yet for the laser fish from the state. And the other one for, um, microfilming, they don't send them in a timely manner. So I really can't see where they're heading except for. Um. Gone it. My laptop keeps freezing up here. Come on. So right now they have about fifteen hundred expended, but they're telling me that they're going to be expending it all. It's just the bills have not all, it's been sent to us as of yet, but that's what they had advised me when I was trying to do my quarterly analysis.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Lisa.
Okay, and if you wanna go to finance, you certainly can. It's up to you.
Um.
I just wanna shut my door a minute here. There's people walking around outside of it.
Take your time. Um, everybody, we could go into finance.
Okay, I'm here.
Does anybody have any questions? Finance starts on page two hundred and eight, I believe. Double check. Actually, it starts on page two hundred and four. Steve.
Yeah, so I'll just say, I did send one question in advance to, to Mike and I believe, um, the town clerk covered it. So it was for the town clerk division. Do we project to see a higher demand for Talon's housing stock going into twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? And has there been any observed increase in ongoing or anticipated work or any? An anticipated development of single-family homes or multifamily projects? And the response was, we are estimating a slight increase for the town clerk conveyance taxes and recording fees. We did experience a large increase in activity in the current fiscal year that was not expected. There was a large majority of refinanced mortgages, et cetera, this year, and we do not expect to see as many next year, but have projected a slight increase. And this rubber revenue source is also cyclical. So just thank you for providing the answer to that question.
I had a question very similar to yours.
And that's, and that's all I had for, for finance.
Anybody else have any, uh, questions in the finance area? Alright, Lisa, oh, no, Lou does. Go ahead, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, trying to find that damn button. Um. I did have a question regarding the registrar voters. Um, was there, um, any overtime or, or hiring that we had to do, uh, with that were COVID related that could? I know, uh, Mr. Rose and Mike's already sort of covered that, uh, where we, all the departments have been asked to, uh, look at the COVID expenses. But is there anything that, uh, that would fall under that that was included inside this budget?
In, in the request, um, I don't think he added any funds for COVID-related. Um, Mike, if you wanna pop in on that, you can, but I know in the current year. We certainly had some COVID-related expenses as well as, um. We had a special grant outside the operating budget that helped pay for some of those, uh, overtime amounts.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, yeah. I remember they had, they had gotten the grant for the temporary, um, help for that, uh, regarding the election.
And, and the ballots and all that, the absentee ballots.
Yep. And, and so was that, is that covered under the, the thirty, uh, thirty-seven fifty that's listed there? Under temporary help or?
No, that is, let me just get to him. Let me pull up the budget detail.
I'm seeing Lou that that thirty-seven fifty is stipends for training deputies to become registrars.
That's what it was, yes. Uh, for attrition planning, they're trying to, um, bring a couple more people on board. To get them trained so that when, um, Mike and, and, um. The other gentleman. Len, sorry, um, retire, at least they will have some attrition planning. And people trained in place to take on their positions.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
No problem. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Lisa, page two oh eight, um, the overtime that we have in here. See, um. The overtime here, let's see, are the, what are the actuals for this year? Cause we had zero, zero, then five hundred dollars.
And I did shut that page too. Um, I think we're around. Four or five hundred dollars so far this year under overtime. And a majority of our overtime will probably hit when we start trying to do the final budget book. And the audit stuff, the preliminary audit, which will start in May and into June. There'll be a lot of extra, um, time that we have to fit in to get everything that the auditors need. And fit that in with everything else that we're working on.
Do you think you're gonna hit around the twenty-five hundred mark on that?
Um, you know, each year it varies and you will see in, in earlier years that it, there's a zero balance for actual expended. That's because this was in a different budget before and we moved it into, um, budgets the best. We took the pot and split it up, um, the best we could on each department thinking who would use what. Um, so I don't know if we're gonna use the whole twenty-five hundred this year. But what actually happens is that if any other department, um, because there's union requirements to pay for overtime. For the union staff, um, if we need the money in other departments that didn't have the overtime. We tend to transfer those funds to that department. So if I don't use it and someone else needs it. Um, we do that. And I think, uh, one place I will be looking at possibly moving some money this year's to the town clerk's office. Because they did have to have some extra help and we're just trying to. Once everything's, um, we look at everything, clean it up and we may have to transfer some of those funds there if that grant didn't cover everything.
Okay, perfect. Um, and temp help, same question. We don't typically spend anything there and we've got five hundred on there for this year and for next year.
That, yes, that's a placeholder in case, uh, something happens to me. And you gotta have somebody come in to take my place or if, um, we have some attrition, which we never know if that's gonna happen. Um, or if there's special projects, if we need special help. This year I've been very fortunate, um, that I have a young intern and, um. I kinda took him under my wing. I'm trying to teach him government accounting and he's been trying to do special projects for me. So I don't have to hire anybody. Of course, he's still learning and it's not exactly the way it should be, but he's learning. And, you know, I, I actually had him, I gave him ideas and had him put that five-year. Uh, get the base work together on the five-year, um, financial plan that I'm working on. But I'm gonna be working on the numbers, but I had him get the structure together.
Absolutely, turns are great.
You know, something like that. If I didn't have the time, we try to contract it up, but we most likely don't always use it.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, page two eleven, um, assessment services, training and development. Um. Was it training and development? I think, yeah, it looked like, uh, after, let's see, we've had a pretty, pretty low years. For the last couple of years and it's back up in the three thousand range now. Um. And then there's a ten thousand dollar transfer in here out to the CNRE. I was hoping you could kind of, is that the revol?
Uh, Jason, I'll let you respond to part of it, but let me, uh, at least address the rebound. Yes, the ten thousand. Um, it was in, under professional services in the past and it really should be shown as a transfer out. And that is to be put aside for the revol each year, which we did in the current year as well. Um, but it was under professional services. So you'll notice professional services has gone down around ten thousand. And this one has gone up. Um, regarding the training, I know, um. Some of it was COVID impact, other parts were, um. They were, they had some available funds that they had been using from a prior conference that was credited to be used that. And also this year they have a new employee who is going to be required to have some certification training. Um, Jason, you wanna elaborate at all or did I get it all?
Um, no, I think, I think we about nailed it. Um, we did have some increases on our, um, fees for our vendors. For both our, um, administrative package and our assessment package. So the net, um, loss there was because we did have the ten thousand. So the net loss there was because we did have the ten thousand in this professional services. Then we moved it to CNRE, so I think it was nine thousand and change that we.
Yeah, I think more of the training one.
No, actually, this, this was good. So on the professional fees one, what else, what is left in that twenty-two thousand dollars? What are we using for professional fees in this area? Because the ten thousand moving up, that makes sense, because that's.
That's, that's the Kama software maintenance fee, so that, but Jason, go ahead.
Yep, within professional services is a vision, which is our Kama, our appraisal software. We have our mapping in there, which we split fifty-fifty with planning. What else we got? We've got quality, which is our administrative package that handles all the personal property valuation and transfers those values to tax. Our GIS licenses and a sales software that I use called Concom, but that makes up all of that.
Okay.
Much of a change there. It was that ten grand coming out.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Page two fifteen, the independent audit. Oh, um, that's a set amount, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's a contractual set amount.
Yes, that will be paid, that was paid in full last year, it's paid in full. It'll be paid in full this year and the same amount for next year. That's a locked-in amount. We pay fifty percent, and the Board of Education pays fifty percent. And that's new contracted amount that was.
That's the new amount. Okay, two twenty-three on the town clerk. On the town clerk, are we expecting the land record recordings to stay at the level that they currently are? I noticed that the printing is increasing by two thousand dollars. Would seem that we do, but unless I'm mistaken, I don't see a corresponding uptick in expected revenue assumptions on page forty-nine for that same uptick of land record fees?
We, we, Kathy, are you here too? We did increase recording and document and recording fees.
Page nineteen.
Let me go back to page nineteen. A slight increase.
Nineteen, recording fees. Where did I see that? Why am I saying page nineteen?
It should be more like page forty-eight.
Yeah, wait, what did I say? Forty-nine, sorry, yes.
Document recording fees.
Those are all.
Ten thousand dollars there.
No, I'm looking at like the twenty-twenty-one estimated actuals are two hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred. And then the.
I see, I see on page thirteen, it says recording fees are up from seventy thousand to eighty thousand.
Where is that? And the page forty-nine though?
Okay, let me.
Oh, wait. Is that document recording fees?
Yeah.
All right, I see that. All right, please accept my apologies. I did not see that, so there is a corresponding uptick. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong fees.
Okay. Yeah, I was like, what are you talking about?
Obviously getting late. Okay. Increase in overtime and temp help. Both of those numbers, is that the same thing that was recorded somewhere else before, and now it's being recorded here?
Yes, and we didn't increase it at all. We just kept it the same. And certainly this year, it was all used, and it'll all depend on what happens next year too. A lot of, the overtime in, in the town clerk's office also is used for when, like, heavy dog, dog licensing season. Sometimes people have to work overtime to keep up with all of the work. It's only a two-person office. And there's a lot that comes in that has to be managed, so there's, sometimes there's overtime.
Perfect. And then the, the, I have a, the last one that I have on for you guys is page two twenty-five. The contingency account. So if, if I'm looking at this contingency account, you know, last year, we spent about ninety-two thousand dollars in this account, and I understand what a contingency account is. But we went up to a hundred and sixty-four, two seventy-seven for this current year.
I can explain that. The actuals are going to look much less than what was budgeted. A big chunk of the contingency, if you notice, it's called personnel adjustment. What happens is that, that budget, say there's a hundred and twenty-six thousand budgeted, say nineteen twenty was that much. I, I don't remember what it was, but in that budget, we put, like, for example, if union contracts are still being negotiated, we don't put the raises right into the actual operating budget under the payroll line. We will set them aside here as a reserve, but if the contract is settled and has to be paid, the funds, the budget money is moved to the right operating account. So you won't show it fully expended here, but you will see some items expended here. So there's certain things that'll hit this account directly for personnel adjustment. As an example, if you have a retirement, there's certain other wage fees that are, that are, that were paid out of here. Those things will hit the account directly, but the rest of the money is actually moved out of this account to another account. So that's why you don't see the actual.
From a salaries perspective, so that's that, mainly that personnel adjustment line?
A majority of, of the reasoning is that, yes.
Okay, and then, so what's the, the driver of the fifty thousand dollar increase this year?
We have five thousand of it is for our regular contingency. With a town our size, we've been trying to hold thirty thousand over the years. And as you'll see, the past history of things that come up, engines getting blown in dump trucks or furnaces going down if we didn't have the funds in other areas, you know, things, unexpected things. And then what we have to do is find money in other parts of the budget to cover those things that are charged directly here. So this year, I asked to increase it just five thousand dollars to try to give us that little bit of buffer because the other department accounts are getting tighter and tighter and tighter. There's really not a lot of fluff in, in the big accounts. As you will see in public works, although you may have a minor increase in there, but a lot of.
Dollars in their contingency.
Too, yeah, and there's, and when he gets it up, it, that can be discussed. It was part of a capital thing, and we're moving it into his operating budget, but.
Get ready, Scott. You're next. That's a get ready, Scott, you're next.
And I can help with that as well. I'm sure Mike can too. So anyway, I asked to increase five thousand dollars to cover for some of these emergencies because I'm afraid that we're just not gonna have enough money for when these emergencies come up. If we don't spend it, that money goes back to the general fund. The personnel adjustment this year, we still have one union not settled, so those funds are in here. The regular department head raises are in there. And there's also a percentage of an extra payroll of how we have to do the accrual for payrolls. I, I don't know if you understand that. We have to charge off to June thirtieth for part of it. And so the amount that's gonna hit this year is gonna be extra, so we had to put that in there. And then we'll move the money where it has to go once that final payroll hits.
Yeah. What's the, the, the prior year tax refunds? How are we feeling on that? We're gonna get that, that, that's showing as a, the fifteen thousand, and it's kind of bopped all over the place. So I didn't know if you had an estimate of how we were doing this year and if we were just kind of sticking to the same logic for next year.
We are kind of sticking to, we always try to stay right around fifteen thousand. Some years it has been twenty-five, thirty thousand, some years it's been seventeen, eighteen. Past couple of years have been lower. This year is trending a little bit higher than last year. I know, I just saw a lot of refunds come through. I could check the account. But we always try to keep it right there. We had it higher, and we lowered it down a couple of years ago. I think we had it either twenty or twenty-five thousand and cut it back to where we thought an average trend would be.
That works. That, that, that explains. That's just all I was wondering on. And then the last question that I have here is, sorry, hold on one second. Holy moly, my thing is going crazy here. Last question I have is regarding the PCC, the Permanent Celebration Committee. I know, Mike, we should have pretty much virtually nothing for actuals for this last calendar year, correct? Unless are we?
We did have.
Are you telling me that, that we're going to have the Memorial Day parade?
Well, that had come up actually on tonight's governor's call, and they did say that it's likely that by May, they don't want to, they don't want to go full, you know, blown with it yet. I think that, that there'd probably be some, some semblance of an in-person parade, but with obviously proper social distancing and masking. But they did ask us for a little bit more patience for planning purposes. And some, you know, the, some people had pushed back and said, well, we need to start planning. It's already March in time for May. So I think they want us to wait a little bit longer, but I do know there's some relaxation of the social dis, or not socializing, but there's a relaxation of the overall guidelines coming up in a few weeks where capacity limitations can be increased. So there may be some chance, some good chance that we're gonna have an in-person parade this year, yes.
And so far, they've spent about nine hundred dollars out of this year's budget. Some of it was that scarecrow contest.
Yep.
They did a video tree lighting.
Yep.
You know, things like that. And last year, you know, when the COVID hit, I think they spent about a little over twenty-four hundred dollars, but in the past, they, you know, they trend close to their budget.
Yeah. All right, that's all that I have for finance. Scott, you still awake?
Kind of.
I'm here. All right, okay, that leaves us up to Public Works, everybody. Starts on page one forty, well, I have one forty-six. Let me double check in case anybody else wants to follow along. One forty-three starts the Public Works area. Does anybody have any questions for Public Works?
Going once, going twice.
We're done, we're up.
Nice try. I, so I just have, I just have a few questions that, one was on the overtime increase. That's showing, I, I think it's on one forty-nine, but, you know, like I said, my pages are a little jacked up here. Now, were those, is that increase due to raises or was that more, more overtime worked, you know, by, by your guys?
Oh, that's basically based on the salary increases for the crews.
Okay, and were there, were there any other overtime increases or any time, any other overtime expenses that that could be attributed to the COVID, so that we could put that in for some type of reimbursement?
No, we currently have two of our parks and facilities maintainers that come in the town hall every morning for roughly an hour and a half, continuing to do a, a wipe down of all of the touchpoints throughout the entire building, but that's on straight time. That's not any overtime.
Okay. Then under the other services and fees, Scott, that it looks like the annual maintenance went up, what, like forty-eight hundred dollars? And is, I mean, is there, is that because we, I mean, I'm hoping we're still doing normal maintenance on our, on our equipment.
This is for this, that forty-eight hundred dollars, Lou, is for generators specifically at the, the different buildings. Previously, we had utilized our electrician. They would go out, they'd run these, but we found that once we started replacing the generators, like the one up on the tower over at the senior center, that we didn't feel that the, they were being exercised and maintained the way they should have been. So we have reached out to the contractor who actually installed the new generators and worked out a maintenance program with them, just as I have with the generators in each one of the pump stations.
Okay. And then the last question I have, at least far on my notes, the fuel prices. I mean, again, and I know that there's been, that I'm sure there'll be a few other questions regarding this, but, I, I mean, well, last year, I thought that we locked in fuel prices for, for the, for our fuel oil, I mean, for our fuel and, and oil, and it's, we're seeing an increase again, and if, is there, can you explain that?
I could, I'd like to kind of defer to Mike Wilkinson and even possibly Lisa. Lisa runs a trending program where she looks at heating oil and propane usage and where she thinks we're gonna be, and that's what we base our, our consumption on as far as the pricing. I sat in on a meeting with Mike Wilkinson and someone from the board at Bed, and we had a discussion about the diesel prices. Because what happens, Lou, is if we lock in, let's just say for thirty thousand gallons and like this past year, where the buses didn't run anywhere near with like they did, we get stuck at the end of the year where we've had to buy that diesel fuel and not actually take delivery. So the, and Mike Wilkinson can correct me if I'm wrong, the arrangement we've made now is that they're going to honor the price that we have now and let us kind of buy back the, the fuel that we, that we didn't use without any penalty. It was it was a lengthy discussion, but again, that's, you know, those are some of those things or most of those things, I would say, are handled mostly by Mike. He, he's the one who negotiates our contracts for those.
Okay, so can anyone else sort of shed, shed some light on that?
So, Lo, is your question why it's going up or?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I, you know, and now it's, you know, now it's, that Scott sort of said that we've, you know, that we were set to buy thirty thousand, thirty thousand gallon, and now we're, you know, is, am I, if I'm understanding correctly, then we got stuck on that and that we had to pay for that, even though we didn't use it. And I see Lisa shaking her head. Is that, is, is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, that was mainly the board event, though, I think.
Ford event ended up having to pay. I, I think we had, Scott can say how many gallons we had to pay for any. But exactly like Scott said, we're locked in to a certain amount of gallons. If you're looking at diesel, I'm not sure which commodity you're looking at right now, but I have my spreadsheet. You know, the price of diesel went from one eighty-seven to two dollars and thirty cents a gallon right there. That, that hits about at least a fifteen thousand plus increase to the budget just for diesel across the board. We have gasoline, that was about a fourteen thousand dollar increase in the cost for, for the amount of gallons that we use. Heating oil. That was a reduction of almost seventy-eight hundred dollars because the price of heating oil locked in lower than what we had for this year.
Okay. All right, and so then, that the, so the, I mean, so basically the price, the fuel price increase is going, is what's driving the increase in those additional costs and for us?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
Okay. All right. I'm just wondering, just because I wanted to get some clarity on that. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lou. Steve.
I think Kurt was actually next, so I'll let him go first.
Sorry, you popped up on the screen first, but go ahead, Kurt.
All right, thank you. How you doing, Scott? So Lou, my, my question here about the overtime, so maybe a little easier. Thing I was looking at, and it's, it's not just this, particularly with the parks and rec, or parks and facilities, rather, on page one forty-nine, they're talking about the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty overtime actuals of a, there was a significant drop off. Do you, do you know why that was?
This is for last year?
Uh, yes. Or nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, rather.
Yeah, if you guys remember, last year was relatively mild winter. And while the highway guys came in more regularly, if we were able to keep the parks and facilities crew home until about four o'clock in the morning, that's what we would do. Then they'd come in and address the, the schools and the fire departments at that time.
Okay. That's very useful. So, all right. Well, that makes sense. Obviously, still got a plan for heavy winters, no matter what you get, so.
Right, right.
That's all I got, Tammy.
Okey dokey. Steve?
All right, yeah. So again, I'll, I'll just summarize some of the questions I asked and hopefully some of them are helpful or if you have any questions. Germany, Germany don't, will be mirrored a little bit. So the first was, what is the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration Clearinghouse fee? So the clearinghouse is a, is a secure online database that gives employers, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, state drivers licensing agencies, state law enforcement and personnel, real-time information on commercial drivers licenses and commercial learner, learner's permit holders, drug and alcohol program violations. The next question was, what are the miscellaneous tools and machine equipment parts generally needed for these increases? Typically, the expenses in this account are for hand tools such as battery-operated drills, saws, drill bits, and so on. For example, a twelve-inch saw blade for the table saw that was recently purchased was fifty bucks. A new hammer, drill, and bits cost us three fifty, three hundred and fifty, to clarify. These tools are used on a variety of different projects throughout the year, and this account has been underfunded for the last few years, and we felt it would be best to fund it more appropriately. Are there any immediate repairs for the jail museum that fall in the miscellaneous repairs? The viewing deck on the second level and the side entrance, which has been closed off for the last few years, as well as general maintenance? And I asked if this was just sort of general maintenance for the miscellaneous, and I believe it was Scott that responded that mostly. That's what it's for. How old are the current generators mentioned in the increase? And is there any risk of failure for replacement? I think Council of Lubbock covered a good portion of that. And I think Scott also answered that, yeah, we have two brand-new ones at the senior center in the Bald Hill. All the others are older and haven't repurposed, such as the one that recently replaced, replaced senior center, which is, will be used at the parks facility. What is the current balance of the cemetery account? Has this account seen any trending increases or decreases to provide supplemental aid for paying seasonal help? So operations is one twenty-two, one-one-nine, and perpetual care has one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one sixty-three, and a reserve of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I think Lisa also added that one hundred and twenty-five is a perpetual fund reserve and is restricted, restricted. It cannot be spent. So actually, I did want to follow up is, what is that restriction or why, why can't it be spent? If you can elaborate on that, Lisa.
The, I'd have to go back to the original paperwork, but I think there was a donation for this perpetual fund or something several years ago that set aside, that said that only the earnings from that initial investment could be used towards the maintenance of the cemetery. So it was restricted right from the get-go. So that piece of it is set aside. So any interest earnings goes to the operating fund each year, and it's not a heck of a lot. Other money in that fund over the years accumulated from the sale of plots. And then somewhere quite a few years back, they changed from selling the plots out of that particular fund and putting it into the operating fund where it should be more appropriately accounted for. And I know Scott does utilize some, some part-time help in that account. And there's times, like if there's certain pieces of equipment that are used for the cemetery, whether it be a truck or something, some of those funds have been used in the past to offset it. But, you know, there's not a lot used there. Scott, I don't know if you have anything else?
No, the, I mean, like the, the mini excavator that the Parks and Facilities guys have, ninety percent of the time that's used strictly in the cemeteries, occasionally it'd be used on a ball field, but most of it's in the cemeteries for digging the grave sites.
Thank you. And then the last question was, are there, I kind of looked, I want to see what page it was. The budget, let me see if I can find it. It was regarding the adopted spot.
Yes, we currently have, I believe, there was nine or ten spots that are unadopted at this point. So we aren't really looking to put more on the list until we get those kind of filled.
Okay, yeah, because I think it was, it was mentioned as one of the goals. Yeah, it's to continue to promote the growth of the adopted spot program. So, okay. I just mis, misread that, and I thought, I meant we were creating more spots.
We are, we, yeah. We typically reach out every spring to the people who do adopt the spots, just to remind them to let us know if they want mulch delivered. And it's time to beautify each one of those spots.
Okay. And is it on the town website if people wanted to adopt the vacant spots? Is there a good web address for that?
On our Public Works page, there is a, a direct link to the adopted spot, and my executive secretary handles all of those. You know, he'll keep me up to speed on what's going on.
It's the very top link on the left. It's alphabetical, so it's, it's right there.
Sounds good. That covers all the questions I had. So thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mike.
All right. And just to add one more thing.
Yeah.
You guys, as far as cemeteries go, you know that we did receive the neglected cemetery grant again. This year, it's a two-year grant. It's, last time it was, I believe, twenty-five hundred. This time it's like thirty-three hundred, but there won't be one next year. We're preparing the documents right now to request proposals from local monument companies to come in and give us a price for straightening and repairing of the old stones in all the cemeteries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, Scott. Here we go. Actually, I don't know that this one's you. I think this one's a Mike question. One, page one forty-six, Mike. The engineering services. So where are we for actuals on this one this year in projection? And do we expect the same level of services going forward? We were significantly lower than the previous years, and I know we've gone back and forth on the whole engineering role and position and all of that a few times. So I'd, I'd really like to understand the seventy-five thousand, what's behind those assumptions, what we're getting for that? And if we think we're going to have to continue that same level of service for next year.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, first of all, the engineering services, that's interesting, the timing on this, because we've had some in-house conversations. So somehow it ended up in the Public Works budget, which is consistent with some other towns. Really, you know, and this actually, this is more, the presentation on this will be when the land use departments come on Tuesday.
Yeah, like it's a weird spot for it. It's in.
It, it is true that Public Works and engineering go hand in hand, and they do, obviously, the object code encompasses engineering. Scott, I'm sure will agree that he doesn't oversee our town engineer. And, and actually, it's, it's been a subject of conversation we've been having recently about how do we better streamline and, and, and account for Chuck's time as the town engineer? So the most, the day-to-day usage of the engineer as it relates to the town budget really comes more from planning and development. There is some overlap with Scott, obviously, but it's more has to do with drainage. And of the BPCA, I believe, maybe a little bit, Scott, as well. So we're thinking about maybe actually moving the engineer line item next year. It's too late for this year, but we're thinking about maybe putting it in either under planning and community development or an alternative might be to make it a standalone department reportable to the town manager, which is a possibility. Other communities have that option as well. So let's put, for this year's budget, since we're going with this year's, you know, information, it's going to stay in, in DPW for now. And there is, I don't have the actuals. I don't know if Lisa looked into it. I think Chuck is maybe somewhere around the halfway mark of the seventy-five thousand. But that, you know, that, that can come and go depending on what applications are being looked at. Some of what Chuck does to, as the town engineer, is applicant fee-based as well. So when that happens, it's actually the applicant for a development that pays his fee, and, and it's not the general fund that does. But if for, you know, town-related projects, that there's no applicant that's associated with it, that's where that comes out of that seventy-five thousand dollar account. It's more of an overall question in the future about whether we want to go and try to find a full-time town engineer, which will probably or very likely cost you more than seventy-five thousand dollars a year, especially when you build in benefits. And I know Talend has had a couple of full-time town engineers in the past that didn't have very longstanding times with us. But, you know, what's, what's nice about working with an engineering firm is that not only do you have your town engineer, but you have the support and backing of all the other members of that firm. So we contract with CHA. And obviously Chuck is a very qualified, you know, engineer. He, good credentials and everything. But if he doesn't know something, or if he, or there's something that is either above his skill level or possibly something that he can farm out to one of his associates, he's got a team of people behind him. The, the counter to that is if you have a full-time engineer, you just have that person that, you know, is here or isn't here because they're on vacation or whatever, they're sick. So you don't have that bench of support. So again, it's a philosophical discussion that we may want to have after the budget season. Right now, things are working well with Chuck. There's no reason to, there's no reason to think about, you know, doing anything with the engineering budget at this point. He's very pleasant to work with, and we are, we do have a contract with him through the end of this year, and we're actually talking about doing an extension year as well. So that would bring us through to the end of the next budget cycle, so we can have these conversations. If there's any decision or desire to go full-time with an engineer, is also, you know, you're at the mercy of the, the market, the applicant market. You know, when we went out twice for a full-time engineer and we came up empty. So that's when we decided to just go the contracting route. But this conversation, I mean, there may be more to share on Tuesday when we address this again. But I don't know, maybe Lisa or anybody by, by Tuesday, we can give you the actuals. I just don't think we were prepared with that tonight.
That's fine. I'm just more wanting to make sure that we're, we're looking at the assumptions. We're going to stay flat for next year also. That, you know, we, that we're reviewing that, so we can go over the actuals for whenever, whenever.
I have it if you want it.
All right, you got it. Hey, I'm just following Mike's lead.
So far, they've spent about thirty-one thousand dollars out of that budget. Last year, I see about eighty-nine thousand was spent out of the budget, so. But there, I think they're trending close to what their budget will be, maybe a little bit less. What comes in for projects.
Oh, well, I was going to say quickly that it's not that Chuck's not busy, but a lot of his work is driven by applicant submissions.
Right, right. It's, it's driven by, it's driven by the need. I understand that part, and I guess that's what I, I'm trying to kind of get at is, do we think that same flat, you know, same flat or increase, decrease, and, and what we think the need might be for engineering services next year?
Um, Scott, did you want to add? I know, because you work with Chuck, too.
Right. I think what had a big impact on last year was the fact that we had different things come up on Old Cat Hole Road that were not covered by FEMA, or not FEMA, but lots of. Yeah. And all of a sudden, we had to rely on Chuck and his firm to, to finish certain inspections, land-taking, things of that nature. We had one driveway that the poor family couldn't get out without bottoming out. So we had to redo their driveway, and that was another place that, you know, Chuck and his firm stepped up and, and created the plan, designed the plan, and then the contractor did the work, but that was stuff that was not reimbursable through lots of.
Yeah. So we're fairly confident, Mike, we're going to stay pretty flat.
Yeah, it sounds like the trending is, is flat. I don't think we need to go over seventy-five, but I don't think we'd want to go under either. But as all, as any of these accounts, if we don't use every dime, it would revert back to general fund.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Page one forty-seven, that was just your, I think I can get to that. Let's see, one forty-nine, other services. So can somebody please give some, some background on this, the alarm monitoring fees? So it said that they'd all been consolidated into one account, so I would expect to see reductions in other accounts to consolidate it into the one. So can somebody tell me?
Didn't we remove them? I think we removed them from the, the budget detail. So you're not seeing reductions. You're just seeing it's not there anymore.
Well, but then we have the, so, so this one here, we're saying totally removed.
I believe so, but let me just, is that correctly? So that we took them off the page, because I think they were in, let me see. I remember we struck them when we were going through the.
I don't think we would have taken them off of the page in total, because the account for historical purposes should have stayed there from year to year for the actuals, but.
So I guess, yeah, that's the question.
There is a major increase in alarm fees, which Scott can speak to.
Yeah, well, what, what happened was, if you look under like the, and I don't know what you guys have for paperwork, but under, we'll say Hicks Town Hall, there was a fire alarm service line item for twenty-six hundred dollars. That was taken out, and that was combined with this whole nineteen thousand dollar, or whatever the fee is for the fire alarms now. The other thing is TN used to do this, and they were monitoring a lot of these, some of these for free. Then, then they started charging us, and the new company that's doing it, it's a little more expensive, but everything is covered. Now, we've added a few more. We didn't have one at the art center before. We put a new one in there. So that, that drove up the price a little bit. But overall, all of our buildings are now covered with fire alarms.
This is the whole Talon County Mutual Aid.
Yes.
Provide these services. So when you say, when I have down here Talon Mutual Aid used to provide these services, they're no longer providing them. And then I have, so so what you're saying is we did not pay for these in the past?
We paid for some. We paid for some, but there were not, there were some, some of the buildings were not covered, such as the arts building. That, that didn't have an alarm system in it. And now we've gone through and we've put alarms in everything, and it's all being monitored by a, a new alarm company. And I'd be happy to tell you the name if I could remember, remember it, because the company, the company that we contracted with just sold out to a national company. I don't remember the name of the national company.
That's all right. I don't need to know the name of the company. What I'm just trying to make sure is that we've got, we've got reductions in some areas and then a plus in this to try to find out what the net is.
It's not going to, it's not going to add up because some of those buildings did not have fire protection before, so we've added to it.
We've added some. Okay. All right. Okay. And this is just fire. This is just fire protection, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, not regular, just alarm stuff. All right. All right. Utilities and Hicks are going up by twenty-one thousand dollars on page one fifty-two. And Lisa, this, by the time I got to this page, I said, you know, what would be useful is if we had like an exhibit that showed us the utilities, the fuel, like all of those things in, in one, so we could kind of track it as a total because utilities and fuel and diesel are spread out throughout the entire budget. So it's hard to kind of like combine them to say, this is how much we're spending on utilities. This is how much we're spending on fuel and, and what that changes, because it's so broken out. But can you explain the utilities going up twenty-one thousand in Hicks?
Yes. A majority of that has to do with electricity. What we do each year, and the board of that also does it. Plus, they have a few other things that they have to do. But we look at the previous year kilowatt hours used. This year was a little bit tricky because we were closed for part of the year, so some of the trending made it kind of difficult for last fiscal year and this fiscal year. So we had to go back. one more year and try to look at the the best numbers to use for the actual kilowatt hours used. Then we're anticipating tariff increases. With Eversource, we've been advised that there was going to be some tariff increases. We don't know what those are yet. But it could be as high as twenty percent increase. So a lot of that is factored in to the the actual kilowatt hours times the current rate increased by a percentage to get a new tariff rate and to calculate a new budget. We just don't know where it's going to end up. But it reflects the increases mainly mostly due to the tariff increases and impact the kilowatt hours, I think were very similar when I'm looking at here. I have a intense spreadsheet that calculates everything, but to share that would be a nightmare.
Yeah, no, I I don't think we, I don't think I want that kind of detail. I'm just looking for like a rounded, like a total fuel utilities of what we have in the budget. Like just the the total spend we're spending.
We could, as a separate report, I probably can't put it in the book. But we could print out a summary. Actually, electricity is not, you have all utilities under one account, so I don't have electricity in one account. Everything's kind of lumped, so it's even tough doing to say it was electricity. But with this new software, you'll be able to look at be able to pull up reports any which way you want.
You're making me happy.
I know, I did it just for you.
I figured, you know, it's like chocolate to me.
You know, I'm hoping we're gonna get this going. We're trying to get started with it. But there will be, you know, new graphs you could play around with and 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 do, and and I think it will be able to let you do it by, you know, if you want to see all wages or all utilities. But, you know, the only, the best thing I could give you right now is what is called an object code report, but it's gonna have utilities.
Not gonna have it broken out.
Electricity fuel, heating fuel, you know, so.
Can you just tell me like, again, you know, I'll send you an email, but if we can just, like, what did we spend in total for all utilities and the in in what we're planning, that's fine. And I can send you an email on that separately, Lisa, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, you want to look at what we spent last year and I do actually have what we budgeted last year. We budgeted two hundred and forty thousand last year, and this year it looks like two hundred and seventy-four thousand in total.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Two hundred and forty for electricity and yeah, electricity and and the the debt service principal and interest for the Honeywell contract. And this year is two seventy-four. And that includes, you know, the principal and interest and all that.
Perfect. So on page one fifty-four, the senior center utilities, I'm assuming it's the same answer as to that one. And Mike, I'm hoping the fact that we have our budget for the senior center utilities and all that is staying flat to the plan, that I I know we should probably have some savings there this year. And the fact that we have just about a hundred percent of our seniors over seventy-five and a high, high percent of over sixty-five that we're gonna actually see the senior center opening.
I think you might want to talk with Beth Bellamy tomorrow night when she's here about that, just, you know, it's it's worth worth asking her since she oversees the senior center, senior center and the director there. So you know, it's certainly something she's looking into. I I know she's doing things piecemeal where we had the senior tax program last month. Now they're they're working on some other virtual type things. So why don't we save that question for Beth tomorrow?
So the utilities, Lisa, I'm assuming is the same answer that you just gave me.
Across the board, it'll be the same answer for all utilities.
Perfect. Okay, you might have to remind me of that if I.
The same answer for all utilities.
Fire station repairs, page one fifty-six, forty-five hundred dollars this year and next. Where are we for actuals and if we're, if we pass the referendum for the new fire departments and start putting up new stations. Let's see, let's say, and then the same with building improvements of two thousand for each. Are we gonna anticipate needing this sixty-five hundred dollars if we're replacing three of our four fire stations?
You take it, Mike, or you want me to?
No, go ahead, done.
Yeah, um, if we're hopeful that the referendum passes and once it does pass, by the time they do all of the design work for John and his crew and start these projects. John has to be able to find housing, if you will, for the apparatus. So we can't do them all at once. So it could be stretched out over, we'll say, a two, maybe even a three-year span. And with some of the buildings being older and the and I'm not saying abuse as in the guys abuse it, but just the constant use of the different equipment, things tend to wear out. And then they call on us to go in and repair a garage door or, you know, garage door opener goes, or something along those lines. They had issues with last year. It it seemed like it was right there in the middle of budget season, Mike, if I'm not mistaken. I came to Mike and I said, hey, the boiler just went down at Station two forty. And the town was able to use a couple thousand out of their contingency. We used our contingency, we were able to come up with the money to get the the boiler replaced, but then that took care of all of the money we had set aside for repairs for down there and a good chunk of our contingency. And that leads us to why I was asking for more money this year. I had thought putting it into capital would have been appropriate because that's what it's geared for, but Mike and Lisa said they didn't want to put it into capital and we should put it in operating, and I was, I was good with that as well.
That was my next question on the contingency. So so that works. So it's basically over the prior years, the issues that we've had, it's just been, it's been cut close. Because it looks like in sixteen seventeen, we spent about seventeen thousand, and nineteen twenty, we spent about twelve thousand, twenty twenty-one, we spent about eleven thousand. We had twenty thousand dollars in there this year, and now we're asking, we're going up to thirty thousand. So it looks like it's almost double what we've been actually spending.
And it's, again, it's a, you know, it's an insurance policy. If we don't need it, we certainly don't spend it. It's not like we say at the end of the year, hey, we've got this much money left over, let's let's go buy something. But we don't want to get to the end of the year. One of the things that that cropped up at the firehouse was they needed the air conditioner for their server room. Was it, you know, it wasn't adequate for what, with all the equipment they had in there, and we had to come up with, you know, funding for that. And that's where we kind of rely on this, you know, rainy day fund, if you will, to help us out. We're pretty good as far as trying to plan ahead. John's good sending us information on what we should be looking for, like with the AED batteries and different parts that need to be replaced. So let us know ahead of time, we can budget for them. But there's just certain things that are unknown that crop up that we have to address.
Okay. Let's see, the refuse and recycling increase of the forty thousand, that's the fifteen thousand contractual increase, and then the increase in the tonnage, correct? On page one sixty-five. That the the refuse program?
Yeah, Mike Wilkinson handles that.
I think that's why.
I think that's accurate. Yeah, it's on the previous page that the collection fees are going up and so are the tonnage.
Okay, on one sixty-seven for public works, there's the sewer and disposal. The fifteen thousand dollars that we're transferring over to them to maintain, to get to the one hundred thousand dollar reserve balance. How close are we to getting to that one hundred thousand dollars?
That would be a Lisa question. She doesn't share that information.
Very secret.
You can't be trusted with a good toy, Scott.
I'll tell you in a minute. I know we were very close last year, but then they had a a pump that went and they had to get a new pump, so they used some of it. I'm trying to find the fund here. Bear with me.
Right, and we've been, while she's looking, we've been doing very good with the pump stations. Where we actually used that pump that we had purchased last year. We had one that was arcing out on the bottom and burning holes in the bottom of the casing. We took that out, put in a new one. And we've since purchased another new one to be kept in storage, if you will, so that if anything happens at the old post pump station, we were able to replace it immediately. That's our, you know, obviously our primary pump station.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get the accounts up here.
So are, is the plan, Mike, that we're just gonna continue to put money in there regardless if they spend money to keep a one hundred thousand dollar balance in there? And when does this shift over to actually them supplying the money for this reserve? And and I ask this just because we know our sewer is highly subsidized by taxpayers. In that our rates are the highest all around because we don't have a lot of users on there. So if we're constantly trying to get up to and keep a reserve balance of a hundred thousand dollars and continuing to to spend the money while we're trying to keep a reserve, it just kind of seems counterproductive.
I see here, I mean, it's in the message that once the hundred thousand reserve is met, that that contribution will be considered to be deposited into the Sewer Operations Fund, which is supposed to be self-supporting. So I don't know, is that countered, Scott, is that accurate to what?
Well, from what I just heard from Lisa, we were closer last year, but then we had to buy some stuff, and now it's lower.
Yeah, I just did a quick calculation. We're close to a hundred thousand, about eighty thousand right now, but see where we end at, at the end of this year. There's been ins and outs this year, so I have to look at the numbers even closer, but right now I think that they may be very close to the hundred thousand by the time we finish this fiscal year. And in the past, the fifteen thousand has always gone to Sewer Operating Fund. What had happened was the commission had a tendency not to want to raise rates, and we understand that. But there wasn't any reserves. If a pump would go down, things would break down. So it was kind of a way to force the commission to have to put money aside because they weren't gonna have that money to offset their operations any longer until we got a decent reserve built up. So that's why it was going to the Sewer Reserve Fund to to handle for those emergencies because we came down to a pretty serious issue a few years back. I think, I don't know if Scott was here or not then. But we had one pump down and the other pump was limping along, and if both of those went out, it was gonna be over five thousand dollars a day to have everything pumped every day. And it would have taken six months to get the pumps replaced, so there wasn't enough money to cover anything like that. So this put the reserve in place, but in the past, the fifteen thousand has offset the Sewer Operating Fund because there was never, there was never enough money to help offset the rates. It's such a small operation but a very high, high-cost operation. Whereas, you know, you have a town like Vernon, people are paying maybe six dollars per thousand gallons and ours is eighteen. And so the impact on on the citizens was kind of tough. I think there were some other parts that were common common uses as well. So I, there was a general understanding that fifteen thousand would help offset that structure in in the betterment of the entire town. There was, you know, you have the big Y complex using the system, everybody using the system and it. It was to help offset some of that. They had actually the sewer, the water pollution control several years ago did provide the funding for the sewer line, I think that went, that goes by the big Y area to help promote development in the town, economic development. And that was really something, you know, to put those lines in. Wasn't something they were planning to do, but it did help with overall improvements for the town, to the ability to have a, you know, decent grocery store, things like that. So I think another part of that fifteen thousand helps offset the idea of them issuing the debt, and they're paying the debt payment each year on those fees for putting in that system.
So I guess my concern is if we're putting fifteen thousand dollars a year in there and they're using it, we're never gonna hit the amount and we're gonna continue to subsidize.
Yeah, I think the intention was always to subsidize, whether it went to the operations or the reserve fund, but let's put it this way, they they wouldn't be in such good of a shape now with their system had they not had the ability to get those reserves in place. And Scott, you can maybe elaborate.
Yeah, what what happened when I took over back in two thousand and sixteen. We had an operator, it was called Water Planet, and they were doing the absolute bare minimum. There was virtually no maintenance or anything, and we have since switched. We use Blake Equipment out of East Windsor. They've done an awesome job. We've gone through the entire system. Our pumps at Old Post were running at about twenty-five percent, where they should have been running closer to seventy-five percent. But on Old Post Road, because of the way, the lay of the land, you've got the hills and you've got, you know, both sides and we have what's called air valves in the system, and those air valves have to be exercised. It releases any trapped air. And once they become air-bound, the pumps are pumping against themselves. So about four years ago, we replaced all three. And every other year we go out and we have the contractor come in and exercise them so that everything is working. Pumps are running great. We, on an annual basis now, we have the wet wells all cleaned out so that we're sure everything is, you know, there's nothing binding the float systems, which tells the pumps to turn on and turn off. And, you know, knock on wood, we've done very, very well as far as maintenance goes.
Okay, so, Lisa, are we close to a hundred thousand? And after we get to the hundred thousand, are we gonna continue to do the fifteen thousand a year?
We are close to the hundred thousand, and my feeling is the fifteen thousand would probably revert back to the Sewer Operating Fund next year.
I'm gonna hold you to that, Lisa. All right, Scott, page one sixty-eight, streets and roads were decreasing by eighty-one thousand dollars. And that's mainly the 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 road salt, correct?
Correct. The the cost of salt was, off the top of my head, it was roughly seventy-seven dollars. It's down to fifty-two something now. So next year, if it goes up, you know, to seventy, then we're gonna see an increase, but I wasn't gonna keep it flat because we we certainly didn't need it.
Can you tell me those numbers again, please? Salt was what?
If you go on to something else, I'll find it for you. I've got like three hundred, three hundred papers here.
Well, I'm gonna go on to something else. It's still your area. I'll wait to your time.
Okay, the the salt was two years ago, it was seventy-five ninety-five. Last year it went to sixty-nine ninety-nine, and now it's fifty-two seventy-five a ton.
Ninety-five, and now it's what?
Fifty-two seventy-five per ton. And you guys, everybody's more than aware of the fact that we've had concerns over contaminated wells and what have you, and DEP has asked us to cut back our usage, and we've reduced from thirty-five hundred ton to three thousand ton that we've been purchasing, so.
They reduce down from what?
From thirty-five hundred ton is what we used to purchase. Now we're down to three thousand because we're, our application rates have dropped.
I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to hear that. Um, but I guess my question here is, I know this year, for some reason, um, we did, I don't know if it was experimenting or what we had left or whatever, but the molasses on the roads, and I know the deers like it and that, but I think that that's much more environmentally friendly. Um, is that an option for us to look at subsidizing, um, some or a bunch of our salt for something that's more environmentally friendly?
It, i- it's, yeah, I mean, it's a possibility, but we were paying, we were paying, uh, I, I believe it was six dollars a ton more for that than we are for the, the stuff with the calcium chloride on it. And the calcium chloride works at a lower temperature. It'll work down to somewhere around seventeen degrees where the stuff with the molasses was around twenty. So it's, it's a balancing act. We want, do we want better melting power, or do we want something that the deer are gonna like?
Well, I, uh, this isn't gonna be a popular opinion, but I want something that's not gonna contaminate our water if we can possibly. That's the, that's my aim here, so if we're looking, going down from sixteen, seventy dollars to fifty-three dollars and adding a little bit more into it, and it won't still be the sixty-nine. Um, is that something that we can look at and, and come up with an idea on, Mike?
Well, I mean, I guess it's, we'd have to talk to DPW. I know the fact that, you know, they, they go with what's recommended by, was it DEP or whatever the oversight agency is, but, um, you know, I guess if you're talking about changing the supply, I don't know, we, we still have, I'm sure, a lot uh, that we have in our salt shed. Um, I, I don't know, you know, if you're talking about buying new salt that's at a higher price, uh, or, you know, it's got the different chemical in it. I think even the molasses one, though, has chemicals in it. I don't think that it's like, uh, it's gonna be a cure-all, and.
No, it's still, it's, it's still road salt. It's just treated with
Yeah.
that material to help it not bounce as much. That's what it does.
Yeah.
The bouncing?
It sticks. Yeah, it, it's right. So it still has chemical, and so, but, you know, also, don't, don't forget that, you know, that there's still the water softeners as well. That's another thing.
Well, that's the thing, you know, um, I'm, I'm very interested to see if we can get input from our residents on what their, um, what their levels are looking like through this testing app, since we've, since when we weren't using the plain salt and using this other one instead. So I'm looking for a solve here for those people who are having issues. Um, and if, if we see a decrease now, there might be an opportunity for us to look at trying to find a more environmentally friendly way of doing it. It's just, uh, my two molasses sense there for the meeting.
DEP has, um, reached out to us to share with us some of the findings with the, these different wells. And without going into too many details, I'm certainly not gonna share who it was or where they live, but they showed what their raw water was, then they showed what their treated water was. And after their water was treated, it was a higher sodium content in it than it was prior to it. So I'm guessing their water softener isn't working the way it's supposed to.
I'd be interested to see that information, Mike, if we have it.
If it's public, I can potentially provide it, but some of this I have to talk to Mike Wilkinson about.
Right.
That's fine. Uh, one seventy-three, mechanical maintenance, increase of ten thousand dollars. Um, where are we in actuals or projection for the machinery and equipment so far this year? Seventy-three. What is that increase in ten thousand? That's on top of the ten thousand and the contingency, so this is another ten thousand increase.
Yes, but this is, this is, um, before I.
Paige, are you on, Tammy?
One seventy-three.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Ten thousand dollars machinery and equipment parts. Like I said, uh, this, that's on top of the contingency that was ten thousand.
I can give, um, that's under the, uh, the streets account. We raised that account, I think it was three years ago. But as everybody knows, prices have, you know, gone through the roof with, uh, twelve large trucks on the road. Um, plowing, um, distributing the, uh, or spreading the, the salt and what have you. They're subject to a lot of abuse. They're, uh, older pieces of equipment. And we get to the end of the year, every year, and we are scraping. We've had to put stuff on hold to fix until after July first, and we thought ten thousand would give us a little bit more of a, a buffer, so we wouldn't be put in that position.
So that's, uh, that, again, though, that's different than the ten thousand that we're asking to increase contingency for.
Correct. The contingency, the contingency was originally for what I would designate as like a capital, uh, um, you know, something for a facility. Not so, not for, um, mechanical. This is, this is strictly mechanical for maintenance of vehicles. The other one was more for like when John had his boiler go down. Or if we have a, um, you know, something happen at the lodge. You know, those are the, that's what that money was, uh, kind of earmarked for, the additional ten thousand in contingency.
Okay, uh, page one seventy-four, highway maintenance. Um, how are we doing with overtime this year? Cause it, oh, so that overtime increase is, uh, I'm assuming, is that overtime increase just in rate again? That was like.
Yes, we didn't increase any hours. Strictly, um, just based on, uh, their salaries. So far, we're doing, we're doing pretty well, um. Uh, Lisa would have the numbers in front of her. I don't have my spreadsheet to, uh, uh, to, um, verify exactly what we spent, but seems to me the last time we were somewhere around sixty or sixty-five percent.
Okay, um, equipment rental, we typically only spend about a high of two hundred and fifty, but we're asking for a thousand. Is there something new that we're looking to rent there?
No, again, that's just an insurance policy. Uh, you know, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. But if something happens, we'll say that, uh, you know, one of our tools goes down, and we have to rent one instead of going out to purchase one, such as a, a road saw or something like that. It gives us that, uh, um, that opportunity, but again, I, you know, I tend to be very frugal. I don't spend the money unless we need to.
Okay.
Like, I like to have it there to be safe.
Food and clothing, a little unstable. Um, are, uh, how are we looking on that one so far for this year?
I, I think we're in pretty good shape. The food and clothing, what comes out of that account is per contract, every one of our, um, employees is entitled to, um, I believe it's up to two hundred dollars for the purchase of their steel toe shoes. So we have, you know, you have, um, twelve guys, uh, twelve people at the highway. You've got another nine in parks. You got the facility maintainers. Um, then we buy them safety colored t-shirts for during the summer. Every other year they get, uh, new winter jackets because they get dirty when they're out pothole patching and what have you, so. Um, that's, that's where you see the, the variation in the spending is when we have to buy the jackets, cause they're like seventy dollars a piece.
Okay. And, um, on one seventy-four here, what are the road materials and markers on page seven, one seventy-four compared to one seventy-six?
Okay, road materials and markers are all of our regulatory signs, signposts, anything that's, um, ADA state mandated, um, street signs such as our, uh, the road, the, um, street names, they have to be a certain height with a certain height, uh, letter. The other ones are, um, the other signs, the regulatory signs are the speed signs and no passing or what, what have you. The, uh, um, other one you talked about, the road materials, is, um, that salt, sand, stuff like that.
So it's on page one seventy-four.
Yeah, I don't.
And, um, markers, and then it's on again, so that one there is a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
One seventy-four, and then on one seventy-six, we have it again for a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Uh, Scott, it looks like it's for the three different, uh, ones for highway maintenance, ones for unimproved roads, and ones for ice and snow removal. That shows up in each of the three categories.
Okay, yeah, the unimproved roads, those are our gravel roads. We have a little over eight miles of those. Uh, what we do is once a year, we go out with, we hire a contractor with a grader. He comes in and regrades all the roads. Then they apply a, uh, liquid calcium chloride to it to harden it up, so the water will shed off, and it gives them a more, um, durable surface. Throughout the wintertime, like right now, when we're going through this, the thaw, we go out with, uh, processed gravel and a, and a payloader and spread the material and, and roll it with the payloader to, uh, get us through until, um, late April when we bring the grader back in.
Okay, so one of these is on, Mike, if I hear you correctly, one is for highway, one's for unimproved, unimproved roads.
Yeah, they're on, it's on the top of the, so it's under the program section, highway maintenance, unimproved roads, and ice and snow removal.
Right. And then the other one is the, the hundred and twelve thousand is materials for road. That's when we go out and buy, um, hot patch to go out and patch, um, potholes or to repair curbing. Drive away aprons, things like that are damaged during the, uh, wintertime.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much. Um, one seventy-six, which is the ice and snow removal. Um, how are we doing on overtime this year? Last year we were at about sixty-seven thousand. This year we plan for a hundred thousand, and next year, um, we're going up to, uh, a hundred and two thousand. So, um, which range are we in? The sixty-seven thousand or the hundred thousand so far?
Oh, would, I, I don't have it in front of me. I don't, I can get that and give it to you tomorrow. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but we do keep tabs on the three different, uh, divisions. We have the highway, we have the park, and then we have highway mechanics um, for overtime as well. And the, the parks and, uh, mechanics are, are obviously much lower than, uh, the, uh, highway crew because they're in for, uh, icing for, um, you know, what we call a, a four truck calling, where we just split the town in quarters and go out and check for different spots and things like that. We don't call everybody in, so. We try to save as much on overtime as we can.
I can tell you, if you're looking for the ice and snow overtime stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, right now, I've spent about eighty-three thousand. We'll have another payroll hit from last week, I'm sure. Um, and there's about seventeen thousand left in the account, not quite.
So no more snow for the year, right?
I hope not.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa. Um, last question, on page one seventy-eight, street light and traffic. Last year equipment rental was at ten thousand dollars. This year we planned twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, where we for actuals and projection, and what caused that one year to dip down? And why are we assuming that it's gonna uptick for this year and for next?
Okay, that one's, that one's, the name is, will throw you, because under equipment rental is painting of traffic guidelines and painting of W O lines, painting of white edge lines and stop bars. So it has really nothing to do with equipment rental, other than we, we hire a contractor to do it. And typically what we look at is any roads that were recently paved. That's what we, that's where we, um, have somebody come in and paint. So if, like last year, we didn't do an awful lot of paving just because of the way the funding worked out. So that's probably why last year you didn't see a lot of it spent, whereas this year we're doing, um, White Gold Road. We're doing part of, um, South River Road, which are, you know, they're, they're lengthy roads, and that, they're gonna have to be, uh, you know, painted with W O lines. And then just in the areas where it wears off as well.
Okay, and then the last question I have, I'm sorry, there was one more. Um, the, we're, we're doing repairs to the tree truck, but I thought we contracted out for the, um, tree limb.
We do, we do, we do contract out for the majority of our work. But we have our truck for emergency calls, because if our contractor isn't around, then we have a tree that's, um, dangling across the road, not on wires, but across the road. We have a truck with a bucket on it that we send our guys up in and, uh, um, eliminate the hazard. The issue is we've, um, we have to have it inspected every year because of DOT regulations. And typically every year, we spend a few thousand dollars to have the pins and bushings and, and what have you replaced on them, so that it's, you know, it's, when you're up that high in the air, you don't wanna have anything with play in it.
Yep.
And that used to come out of our, um, maintenance account, so I felt it would best serve to put it here, so we knew exactly what we were spending on that, uh, on that piece of equipment.
Did we reduce the maintenance account for the amount that we?
No, that's the one that we, we increased by the ten thousand dollars as well.
So the, this, for this money here is also, so it's a. Okay.
All it takes is a little bit of, uh, corrosion on one of these pieces of equipment, and it starts eating through the metal real fast, and it's, it's very expensive to replace tailgates. It's expensive to, you know, work on the, uh, the sander parts, things like that. It doesn't take much to, to go through that money when you have as many pieces of equipment as we do.
All right, thank you. That's all that I have. Does anybody else have anything? No? All right, Mike, do you have anything else?
No, I think, uh, so this, you know, you would motion to adjourn, and then we'd bring up tomorrow. We'd come back, uh, no overview presentation tomorrow. We just jump right into the department, uh, presentation, so at least that way we save an hour, basically, so. Um, but yeah, well, tomorrow we, we have, um, three other departments.
Perfect. All right, then, um, I, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Steve Jones, I'd make a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-nine PM.
Lou, Lou will second it.
Hey, this question?
No.
Find the right button, Lou. All right, all those in favor? Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, that's unanimous. Thank you all so much for your work and for your help tonight. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right.